Good evening, I will call the regular meeting of the planning commission for the city of San Clemente, California. And stage eight's meeting to order. Commissioner Cosgrove, would you please lead us in the pledge?
Yeah, I invite everybody to join us in the pledge, please. Ready to begin?
The United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God. Justice strong.
Mr. Otamian, would you please call roll?
Commissioner Camp, he is absent tonight.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Here.
Commissioner McCacken?
Here.
Commissioner Prescott?
Here.
Chair Pro Tem McCann?
Here.
And Chair Crandall?
Here.
The next side of the business is special order of business and special presentations, which we have none. We have one set of minutes to approve the minutes of the P D of May eighteenth. Do we have any revisions or emotion? A motion by McCacken. Second by Commissioner Prescott. Commissioner Prescott?
Yes.
Hi. Commissioner McCacken?
Hi.
Commissioner Cosgrove?
Hi.
And Commissioner Crandall is also an I. We, the next item is oral and written communications. Adam, do we have any written communications you are aware of?
The city has not received them.
Okay. So if anybody in the public wants to address the commission, they can at this time on items that are not on the agenda. I see none. The next item is the consent calendar and we have none for this evening. Item eight, public hearings. Time limitation for applicants is ten minutes. All other speakers are three minutes. Public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed ten minutes. And public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker following closure of public hearing. The planning commission will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues and ask upon the matter by motion. Our first first item is conditional use permit two, two, one, six, five. Ashiatsu by the sea massage and David Correo is the staff member presenting this evening. David?
Thank you, Chair Crandall. I'd see, will you share the screen or should I share my screen? Okay, thank you. Good evening again, Chair members of the commission. Again, the project is Ashiatsu by the Sea Massage Conditional Use Permit twenty-two dash one, six, five. Next slide. The project's location is fourteen, zero, one, North El Camino Real, Suite one hundred. We can see the property highlighted in blue on the image. And it's within the neighborhood commercial two zone and architectural overlay district. We can also see the the property being across from Benito Canyon Park. Next slide. Some background before we move into the request. So this image shows Suite one hundred. It's a one hundred and ten square foot multi-tenant suites that's visible from El Camino Real as we see on the image. Current existing tenants within this suite include a counseling office, real estate and loan office. And we have shared spaces which include a waiting room, a restroom and a break room within Suite one hundred. There's also onsite parking in the form of underground parking, which serves and supports the the plaza. Next slide. Again, the request is a conditional use permit to allow a massage establishment at a multi-tenant suite. Proposed massage service hours are ten a.m. to five p.m. daily. Services provided would be Ashiatsu massages, Himalayan hot stone massages and pregnancy massages. Next slide. Here's the floor plan of the existing suite. So the red arrow identifies the entrance to the suite. You can see that you walk straight into a shared waiting area or waiting room. And then to the left, there's a hallway that leads or gives access to three rooms, a shared bathroom, a shared back, a break room and an additional room at the very end. And the subject massage room is highlighted in blue. Next slide. So the purpose of a conditional use permit is to make sure that the request is consistent with the city's zones and that it is sensitive to the community and neighborhood identity and that it minimize impacts to adjacent uses. So this is what we'll be reviewing today and analyzing. Next slide. So per staff's analysis, staff determines that the use contributes to the existing mix of services consistent with the neighborhood commercial two zone vision. There aren't any major exterior interior changes required. So that means that the existing Spanish colonial revival architecture is being maintained with regards to to the building and to the courtyards there onsite. There's also no intensification of parking, given that the proposed use does not require any more parking than the previous chiropractor office that was in that in that room. We did have this application routed to the Orange County Sheriff's Department. They did complete a background check and determined that the operator is in good standing. They did not find any any records indicating that there was any illegal activities from other previous operations in other locations. So the Orange County Sheriff's Department does support the use and operator at this location. Something else I do want to mention and add here is that as part of this process, the next step for the applicant is to submit and obtain approval of a massage establishment business license, which every year they would have to submit for a background check. So that gives the city an opportunity to to review the the operators' activities and make sure that they maintain that good standing status. So in addition, the applicant has provided proof of their certification per state to go ahead and provide these massage services. Next slide. To further mitigate impacts from from this use on surrounding properties, we have added several conditions of approval, some that are noteworthy are here on the screen. So there is a condition that requires that a suite manager be onsite during service hours. The applicant has already identified a suite manager with the city and we have heard from the suite manager from the suite manager that they have reviewed and agreed to all conditions of approval. We're also requiring that written acknowledgement of massage of the massage business from other suite tenants be provided to the city. So again, this is another condition that they the applicant can already check off the list, given that we received acknowledgement from the tenants within that suite that they are aware and support the massage business within the suite. There's also a condition that would require the installation of surveillance cameras to capture the suite's entrance. This would facilitate the city's ability to investigate. There's a need to investigate the the use and its operations. An installation of an exterior light fixture would also be required as a condition. The light fixture would have to be installed at the entry to further light up the exterior surroundings. And lastly, there is a condition which would require that the massage services terminate no later than seven p.m. Next slide. So in conclusion, staff finds that the project is consistent with general plant policies and it's in compliance with code requirements. Next slide. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act and approve the project subject to conditions of approval. And this concludes our presentation and we do have the applicant present to answer any questions. And I also do want to add that we did receive public comments, which have been forwarded to the planning commission as well.
David, did you say there were public comment or none?
There, we did receive, we did have public comments.
I don't believe I received, did anyone else receive?
I didn't.
I didn't.
I didn't receive it. Adam, do you have a copy of that that could be read to us?
Let's see, you know, at this point, David, if you could forward those to me, I will read them into the record. I think that's the most appropriate thing at this point. I apologize that those were not received by the commission.
Okay, and I did get looks like Sheila Ann Newman is the applicant. And if she wishes to speak, speak now or you do not need to. Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we will open it for public comment. Anyone here want to speak to this item? Okay, we will wait for the to have the public comments read into the read to the commission, but we can open. Let's see. Mal, can we go ahead and open and then receive the public comment?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We will open up for discussion and I will make one clarification. We're here looking at the land use portion of this, the initial use permit. And whether or not we know that in the business license application, they require the background check, et cetera. But we are not here to use that as information that would sway our vote one way or the other. We do not evaluate the individual applicant when we review a project. So does anyone want to start conversation on this?
Chair Crandall?
Yes.
If I could read the public comment and and this this was sent to the commission at two fifty-two p.m. today. So it was received recently. So this comment comes from Lucy Stafford Lewis. This is my formal consent to the special conditions. Sorry. Okay. This comment comes from Susan Neal, to whom it may concern. My name is Susan Neal and I am a I am co-owner of Natural Approach Chiropractic located in Bend, Oregon. I'm writing to you to today to explain my professional business connection with Sheila Newman. We've been in business since two thousand and seven and we have in-network status with many major medical insurance companies, including Blue Cross, Blue Shield, Providence, United Healthcare, to name a few. In our chiropractic office, we have licensed massage therapists that deliver massage therapy and medical massage to our chiropractic patients before or after their adjustments from Dr. Neal. Sheila was one of our L M Ts from April two thousand and eighteen to March two thousand and nineteen. I believe she would still be with us if she didn't relocate due to her husband's career. She worked in our office several days during the week. The majority of massage therapy is covered by the major medical insurance companies, which our office billed on behalf of Sheila. Sheila was always professional, reliable and pleasant to work with. She completed her continuing education in a timely manner each year, along with her license and insurance renewals when necessary. She also completed her HIPAA requirements as needed with our chiropractic office. Sheila was an outstanding addition to our team and we would always welcome her back if she returns to Bend, Oregon. And then she leaves her contact info if any additional questions arise. All right. David, I'm going to need you to kind of walk walk me through some of these. The the email from April twenty-first from Amy Lyons. Is that a public comment or is that just a consent?
You that.
While you look into that one, I'll go to the next one, which is clearly a comment.
Okay.
This comes from Suzette D. Shoulders. And she says, I am a senior citizen living in Bend, Oregon. I was lucky enough to find Sheila Newman several months after she set up her practice of massage therapy here in Bend. I discovered her in two thousand and twelve, I believe, and continued to get massage from her regularly until she closed her practice in March of two thousand and nineteen. Sheila is a very gifted massage therapist and was able to help me with all my usual aches and pains, as well as the injuries I would sometimes get from too much gardening or too many hours spent making quilts. We quilters tend to be over focused on sewing and don't get up and stretch enough. My primary care doctor recommended massage therapy as a way to help me continue with my active lifestyle, both indoors and outdoors here in the mountains, and I was happy to find Sheila when she moved here. I have a friend, Margie, who visited me from Portland and had me schedule a massage with Sheila during the time she was visiting. She wanted Sheila to come to Portland to give her massage. My friend suffers from rheumatoid arthritis and said she had never had as good a as good a massage ever. Sheila is extremely professional in her practice, always maintaining total cleanliness in her work space and an ambient and an ambience calm and peaceful, quiet. I still miss her gentle healing touch. I understand Sheila has to go before your board to get permission to open her studio there in San Clemente. I am sure she will be a welcome member of the healing community there. In Bend, we have a large number of retirees as well as active, very athletic younger people. And she has the skills to help both young and old with keeping our bodies moving and performing well as we go about our activities in life. Next one is from Noel Smiley, who was a San Clemente resident. She says, greetings, I am writing this email in support of Sheila Newman's application for approval to open a massage establishment in the city of San Clemente. I have been a client of Sheila's for over a year at her current location and I can attest to her professionalism and commitment to the well-being of others. I believe it is worth noting that I am a police officer with a law enforcement agency in Orange County. So I understand the damage that illegal massage establishments can have on a community. I can assure you, I have no concerns about Sheila's application in that regard. Thank you for your time and please do not hesitate to contact me should you have any questions. And then she leaves her contact information. David, is is that email I asked about the public comment?
Yeah, that that's an email from one of the existing tenants giving consent of the conditions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. And that concludes the public comments.
Thank you very much. So very much comments about the applicant. Okay, we will go back to opening on discussion with any doctor to start.
David, I have, since you brought it up, I have a quick question. Tell me the difference. You said the next step would be a massage business license. And then you also mentioned certification. Are those two different?
The certification is is a requirement to obtain a license from the city. So yeah, so when you submit that massage establishment license, we would have to make sure that the certification has been obtained.
Okay, we already have certification?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Else?
Hi. David, can you expand on the condition for the suite manager? Is that an independent person onsite at all times? I just, can you just clarify what this site manager is the condition we have for here calling for it?
Yeah, so the intent there was to, in the in the event, if there's any, you know, complaints or concerns from from the public or the city that would warrant investigation of the operations, that facilitates the city having access to the suite. So we have identified an existing tenant within the suite that has agreed to be the the point of contact per se for for that suite. So it is an existing onsite during the hours of operation and she has already submitted consent to that condition.
Wait, you froze just for a minute or less than a minute, actually. So you're saying this is a another, this is an individual that's another tenant in that suite that will be onsite every day?
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I just not. Maybe I'm confused, but this conditional use permit goes to the building? This is not going to at a practitioner, right? So a lot of the emails and stuff are speaking to a practitioner, but we're not granting this to them. Is that correct? We're granting this to the biz, to the building owner. Is that correct?
That is correct. So theoretically, you can have a knee massage operator that would come in after Sheila Newman and they would be able to operate under this conditional use permit. Everyone's with the land.
The, I'll say right now that the a second applicant would have to go through the entire business licensing process again.
Okay.
The business license doesn't continue with the land, just the operator.
Right, so we may all be impressed with the credentials and the recommendations of previous customers of this particular practitioner, but that's really interesting but and and nice to know, but really from a conditional use permit, it's the building that's getting that. That's my understanding.
That's correct, Commissioner Cosgrove. And I'll just add, you know, David has done a good job with this project. It is a bit unique in terms of our typical use permits in that there is a suite that is not entirely controlled by the massage business. It is a portion of a suite. And in order for the city staff to be comfortable with this application and supported, we've conditioned it to require that the entire suite essentially is open for inspection because of of the massage business. Massage businesses are somewhat unique in that the code allows for unannounced random inspections. Additionally, the city is is undergoing a process of proactive massage establishment inspections to two per year, I'll say random inspections. And in order for us to verify that the that the business within the suite is compliant, we need to see the entire suite. So the the suite manager is really somebody that is taking on the taking on the burden of ensuring that during these times that staff would have access to to everything in that suite.
Yeah, I see that on seven point two eight of our resolution, a manager of the business shall be on the premises at all times and available to respond to issues raised by representatives from the Orange County Sheriff's Department, Orange County Fire Authority and San Clemente City of San Clemente Code Compliance during hours of operation. And then I'm looking for, but I assume there is also, as our chairperson Crandall indicated, there will be a requirement for any operator of of that use would undergo all the a business license re approval process. Each each operator would undergo that if there are others than just the one that's being discussed tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct for subsequent operators. This, this would not, there would not be, there would not be a situation where we would have two people.
Great.
Both in that suite.
Getting just, so is that what's what is that's in here that it's a single limited to a single operator?
The code specifies that.
The code does.
Yeah.
Okay. That makes me more comfortable that with that. Okay.
No. Okay, Adam. Either staff or you, could you go through for everyone's benefit? The hierarchy of the approval of the business license? It goes first to community development, correct? Then it goes to sitting manager. Also be reviewed at council, is that correct?
Is that the massage establishment business license is an administrative review? And so it goes to, it starts with the finance department because that's that's who handles business licenses. When they receive it, then they route it to multiple divisions of the city, including planning, code compliance, the Orange County Sheriff's Department, who have their own business license review team and the building division and the Orange County Fire Authority are are typical reviewers. Those the individuals reviewing that application would review the request against the code and make sure that it that all of the requirements in the in the municipal code are met each year. Once that, once that is accomplished and everybody has signed off on it, then it would get routed back. Those approvals would be routed back to the finance department to issue the actual business license.
Very good, thank you. And I'll I'll go ahead and jump in next on this and do kind of the the step-by-step process, thought process I've gone through. And our decision is to be based on the four items of this particular project, pro proposed use is permitted within the subject zone pursuant to the approval of the conditional use permit, which it does and complies with all applicable provisions of the title, sanctum, that is general plan and proposed and intent of the zone in which the use is being proposed. And it appears that staff has studied this and I can make that finding that that can be done. The site is suitable for the type and intensity of use that is proposed. It's an odd one, I agree that it's a little unique that it's sharing the bathroom and whatnot, but I don't see that that's a problem in making that finding. That's the second one. The third one, the produce will not be detrimental to public health, safety or welfare or materially injurious to properties and improvements in the vicinity. I can make being that it is so limited and all make that finding. And proposals will not negatively impact surrounding land uses and I can make that finding. Those are the four we're supposed to base on. And so I find that all of that is in line and I can make those findings. But Mal, could you just do a quick read through one more time of the resolution? And I want to make sure that the regional resolution doesn't infer, we took into account that the Orange County Fire Department's done a background check and all, and that we are approving or agreeing that that was correct or not. We understand it has to be done, but I just want to make sure the wording's correct. And you don't have to respond right away. You can do that at the end of discussion. But since that's not in our purview. Anyone else want to speak?
I have one question. Adam, you look like you were going to say something.
Yes, and I appreciate that, Commissioner Prescott. I would like to address that because I can at this time. So you are correct. The the resolution includes statements of findings that are related to the Orange County Sheriff's Department background check. The the this, these applications are required to be reviewed by the Orange County Sheriff's Department. In this type of situation, when there is not an existing massage establishment, there's not a whole lot for them to review. However, the review includes both the site and the operator because it's the same review that they're going to need to get for the massage establishment business license. And so staff included And so staff included their finding in its entirety. If the commission is not comfortable with the language that's in here, because as you mentioned, it's you're correct that that's not required to be a finding or a basis to to meet the findings. I can, Mal and I can work on some quick wordsmithing.
Yeah, I would certainly just consider Mal's recommendation on that. That's not one I'm gonna make the call on.
There's, there's no issue with 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 having this language in the resolution. Okay, legally, there's, there's no issue with that.
Thank you.
Okay, my question, Adam. Can you elaborate just a little bit on the massage establishment business license? Is that specific to this location or can that apply to many locations, let's say? It could be another, another type of a business next door or in that same area. I'm just trying to understand the license itself.
So the massage establishment business license is specific to this particular site. It is not transferable to other locations. And it 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 does not. The reapplication process requires the exact same information and documents that the initial application is. So it every year they need to reapply for it. It's not just a pay a fee and then get it reissued like most other business licenses in the city.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Adam. I may not be able to clean it from here, so I just want to ask you if this resolution and for the conditional use explicitly limits to one suite in that tenant, multi-tenant suite of suites. In other words, if they get this, let me state it in a way of more my concern. If this conditional use permit is granted, could could the building owner then convert existing suites to include more massage operators? Or is it explicitly limiting it to one suite only?
The approval that would be granted by this conditional use permit would be limited specifically to this room in this suite. Okay, and it could not be modified without an amendment to the conditional use permit. So the conditions of approval, I state, state essentially this, that and I'll just, I'll just read it. It's condition one point three, use and development of this property shall be in substantial conformance with the approved plans, material boards, and other applicable information submitted with this application. And with these conditions of approval, any modifications to the project shall be reviewed by the city planner in accordance with zoning ordinance section seventeen, twelve, one eighty. And then that section provides the authority for the city planner to determine how significant the change is. And if it's, if it's, if it's not insignificant with no public impact, it would have to go back to the plan information.
Yeah, so the so attachment four is the floor plan. And it highlights one room in the suite, I guess is the right way to refer to it, as the subject massage room. And so that by virtue of incorporation of this attachment becomes the as one point three, it is the approved with the plan we are approving.
That's correct. One thing to note is that the suite provides required features of massage establishments. So the bathroom, the break room, those types of features, the the reception area, those still need to be provided as they're described here. The blue outline in that plan is the only place where massage services are allowed to be provided. But the the rest of the suite does provide some required features.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Where's the one point three that you were reading?
It is on exhibit A and page one of exhibit A.
Let's hear that says that it's just, because that's what my only concern is that the CUP is given to the property.
Right.
Not to the one suite.
That's what I'm trying to get at here. Exactly.
So are you saying because the zoning ordinance number seventeen point twelve point one point eight zero? To elaborate it on, because one point three doesn't say that. It is subject to an annual order, this is the suite.
No, so the conditions of approval do not reiterate requirements of the municipal code. Typically, like one of the, I mean, one of the conditions here is one point four, the applicant shall comply with all applicable current and future provisions of the San Clemente Municipal Code, adopted ordinances and state laws. So we don't need to reiterate every section of the municipal code here. The approval of a conditional use permit ties that permit to the land. But it ties it to the land in the in the context of how it was approved. Meaning it 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 it's attached to the property, but it not anywhere that the property owner.
So you're saying because the initial application just involved one suite? That is it in perpetuity for massage activities at this, at this location?
Yes, unless the use ceases for a year.
Is that what the city attorney says too?
Yes.
Okay, that's very good. Okay, anyone else? Chris McCann, do you have any comment or you don't need to?
I had a question, but I think it's, I think I resolved it. We're requiring a light be installed. And I was heard that the hours of operation were going to end at five, but I guess our conditions allow them to go to seven. So in the winter, there would be some dark hours in there. So was that the, was that the theory for the asking for the light?
Correct, Commissioner McCann.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. Okay, do we have anyone to make a motion on this item?
Sure, Crandall.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I agree, you know, with your review of the of the findings. I also can make those findings for the for the CUP. If you like, I could make a motion. I move a resolution of the planning commission of the City of San Clemente, California, approving conditional use permit twenty two dash one sixty five. Ashiatsu by the sea massage to allow a massage establishment at a multi-tenant suite within a commercial plaza located fourteen oh one North El Camino Real, Suite one hundred.
Okay, Adam, should we include secret findings?
Yes. Those are can be found on page five of the staff report as I number one. Do you want to mind just reading that as well?
So if you'd like to include that on your motion.
Sure. Page five. Yeah. Do I just basically say that and and I find that there's no impact by it to be a secret?
My apologies. It's the under recommendation. There's two number ones.
Bottom, bottom.
Next page, page six.
I also, I also moved that we determine the project is categorically exempt from the requirements of sequel pursuant to sequel guidelines, fifteen three oh one, last one, adjusting facilities.
Second. Well, he already said that part.
Yep.
And that we adopt resolution. Okay, that's the motion. We have a second by Commissioner McCacken will take the vote. Commissioner Prescott?
Hi.
Commissioner McCacken?
Hi.
Christian McCann?
Hi.
Mr. Cosgrove?
Hi.
And Commissioner Crandall is also, congratulations on moving forward with the project. It's a terrifying process to go through, but congratulations. Our next item is new business, which is permit streamlining and Mr. Canyon will be the presentation.
Could we get a five minute recess? We need to set up a PowerPoint and it was it is set up. Okay. Oh, no. All right, Cade, you can put the PowerPoint up on screen. I will do a brief introduction and our senior planner, Sarah Toma, will be providing the narrative for the presentation. But this item that's before you is a council initiated item that was referred to the planning commission for input. And this will culminate at this time, at least in a return of the city council at the June twenty first meeting for a special presentation to the council. So with that, I will turn this over to Sarah.
Perfect. Thank you, Adam. Good evening, commissioners. Sarah Toma, senior planner. I'll be presenting to you the permission lining, like Adam's saying that this is a city initiated review of a potential streamlining opportunity. Next slide, please. So just to set things up a little bit, I'm just going to give a quick background for based on our city council meeting and then talk about our planning divisions work program and timeline that we discussed during the city council meeting. And then talk about the streamlining opportunities. And then we'll go through the staff's recommendation. And at the end of my slides, we'll basically go through point by point, which is the list that was provided as attachment to of your staff report. Next slide, please. So March of this year, March first of this year, council directed staff basically to report on potential code and or design guidelines modification to streamline the permitting process. And and May of twenty five, we basically went to the council and we reported back on that what we we focused on was two things. One was the current plan divisions work program. And as well as we provided council with a list of potential streamlining opportunities. And for today's meeting, actually sorry, let's go back. So during the council meeting, council directed staff to come to planning commission to get their feedback on that specific list, which will go through one by one at the end of my presentation. So that's what we're looking for for this meeting. Next slide, please. So for the planned divisions current work program, and this is what we had discussed with council or presented to council, which we have four major projects currently underway, which is our housing element rezoning program, our implementation plan of the local coastal program, specific plan updates and our permit track tracking system upgrade. Next slide, please. For the specific plan updates and a lot of the commissioners are very involved in this, which basically focuses on updating a specific six specific plans that will be consistent with our general plan. And that mostly focuses on auto uses as well as the Los Melinos design guidelines. And staff was anticipating to come to the commission for review July, August of this year. For our permit tracking system upgrade, this is also has been underway and staff will probably be coming to the council under study session to provide a demo. This is our current permitting system. The upgrade is much needed. It'll be focused on a web based system where an applicant can submit their application. It'll streamline the process, avoid any errors and any requirements required attachment that they need to provide as well as from city staff will be able to respond quicker rather than emails back and forth. For our housing element rezoning program, this is a state mandated requirement. It's actually, we're supposed to have this project complete October of this year. It's basically the second part of our housing element that are that got adopted. Currently, this project, we put out a request for proposal on planet bids and that's supposed to close in June tenth. And we're hoping to get some quality proposals and we're anticipating to have a consultant onboard hopefully by July. And then the last one, which is our implementation plan of the local coastal program. As again, as you may know, that staff is currently working with the with coastal staff on our draft IP. And we're basically going page by page on all their comments. So this project is huge. It'll give a local. It'll give us local authority over coastal areas and basically we'll be able to issue CDPs, which is a huge deal. So that project is definitely a larger one and they'll definitely go over into the next year. Next slide, please. So for the streamlining opportunities, the list that we compiled basically focused on simplification of some of the applications that we currently have, addressing the process of minor additions and remodels in proximity to historic resources, reducing the level of review, for example, rather than planning commission, it'll it'll be to ZA approval. And then just allowing more staff level decisions, very minor things that we as staff can make those findings. Next slide, please. So this basically comes to the end of my presentation. We're here to want to get your feedback on the list, which is part of attachment to of the staff report. On on my next slide, it'll, it'll show what we did here. We went point by point for signs, verification, applications. And what we did here, we provided kind of where and the authority, for example, like is it CA, is it planning commission, is it city planner versus planning commission? And we tried to simplify it for current process and proposed process. I would like to point out that the time here that's noted, this is just an estimate. And and then, Adam, please correct me if I'm wrong. The the way we looked at it was from the time the applicant submits and we deem the application complete and until they actually get entitled is the timeframe that we were looking at.
Yes, that is correct. And I will just say at this point, thank you, Sarah, for that presentation. The next few slides are the each of the bullets. And Kate, if we can go back, my apologies. Each one of these lines is each one of the bullets. And what we would like to do is is go through what staff is anticipating could be a streamlining opportunity with with this particular item. Provide a little bit of background in terms of how long staff believes it would take to actually do the work necessary to make this change. And and then what that change would potentially provide for our customers, either in generally speaking, in a reduction of processing time. To the extent that we can, we've put together some rough numbers as what we would anticipate our yearly number of permits related to each item would be. And the intention here is to is really identify which items give us the biggest bang for the buck. Because some of these things, while they're they're they could be a big benefit to our customers, may only be one customer a year. And so with the council's direction, we want to get some feedback from the from the commission on the essentially your your support for this type of change, but also the the priority, if you will, of of which ones would be the best to to begin with. And then when staff goes to the city council and provide this information, they can, they can determine what the direction for staff should be at that time. So are there any questions before we go go through this?
When you talk about consolidating applications, does that mean like you happen to have for this month? Three applications for signs and we put them all together into one package to hear from the planning division?
No, and I and I, but I do appreciate that question because it allows me to say a couple of things. The first is, we also have Chris Wright, our associate planner two with us, he's via Zoom. He has a lot of historical information related to these items. These have been on the planning. These have been on the planning divisions, kind of running list of streamlining opportunities. And so he'll chime in when when that that information is needed, but also on some of these types of details. What I would recommend is that we go line by line rather than kind of jumping around, but just to answer your question, since you asked a commissioner. When we're talking about simplifying applications, we're talking about reducing the number of permit types. And that would be based on our ability to it would be based on our ability to either combine very similar permits that have very similar findings into one type of of application. Or and and Chris, jump in if I'm if I'm incorrect about this. It would it could also actually, no, I think that is that the only that that would be it, yeah. So it's 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 just reducing the number of application types. So right now, let's say we have 15 or so more likely used applications than most. We would be talking about trying to get those down to six or seven types of applications. And that would streamline the process and that it'd be it'd be more straightforward for applicants, less confusing to try to meander through the website to figure out what what type of permit that they want.
Okay, very good. I'm going to make one little quick comment to the commissioners as you're hearing each bullet point. Historically, how it ended up getting the approvals they are now is an evaluation was made on what is important to the public and in the public eye. So there are certain items, signs, historic things that if it's taken out of being reviewed during a public meeting, we're taking it away from the public having an ability to comment and be involved in that decision-making process. So just keep that in the back of your head as we go through this.
May I ask my question? Do you have a question? The I'm very interested in the web-based permit tracking. What model are we looking at? That's out there. I use a few, but what are we? What are we looking at? And and where did you did you get it? Are you looking into the city that's successfully?
So the permit tracking software that we have right now is TrackIt. And the upgrade is to a version of that program, TrackIt 9, which is online. That is a multi-division process occurring in the city right now. It's being led by the IT division. And and that's one of the reasons why we we anticipate coming in in September. But since that's not, since planning is not in control of that process, it's it's kind of hard to say. The upgrade is going to do a few things. It's going to allow for online application submittals, which staff believes is going to be a very large and impactful change for a number of reasons. One, it will allow applicants to essentially see all of the fields that they need to fill in all the documents that they need to submit. Right now, our online application process is is an email where we give you a list of things and then you email them all in. In this type of application, you have to go into each field. And so it's 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 easier to tell if you're if you've got all the information necessary. The other thing is that the 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 upgrade includes a lot of enhancements to the software to just simply make it easier for staff to use, to find information. It's really going to be a benefit to both the public and and staff.
And with this, so I submit my documentation, my package. Does this allow me to track it to the end? Do I know exactly who's been assigned the the package? And then my next question is, is it, does it stay with that person or does it change hands? And can I see when it changes hands?
Yes, it it would typically not change hands once it's assigned. However, that's not always the case. Things happen. People leave the insect for some period of time and we have to reassign an application. But if it were to be reassigned, that would be something that would be visible through the public portal to the applicants.
Does it trigger if if there's a change in planning as far as the the person that is receiving this, does it alert? Is there some sort of alert in the tracking system that notifies that the package has now changed?
That I'm not I'm not certain of. We are, we're going through the process right now of identifying those types of features.
I think one of the delays in permit processing is that it moves from one desk to another desk. And then it sits. So I was, can we connect the dots all the way through the end, the system that you're that you're planning?
Yeah, so that's a great point. I'm going to again rely on Mr. Wright. Yes, I see him on. He can jump in and correct if I'm wrong here. But right now, the email essentially that people submit through it is it's staffed, call it by one or two people specifically. Those two people are not generally the people that would be processing the application. They're doing the intake. They're putting it, they're inputting all the information into TrackIt, which is something that wouldn't need to happen in the future because the applicant would be inputting that information when they submit. In the upgrade, and I I'm hoping Kate might be able to at least wave at me if I'm wrong. It it wouldn't go to, it wouldn't be in, it wouldn't be taken in by a particular staff. The application that gets submitted would be reviewed by the person who's assigning the case or the project. And then the first time it gets assigned to somebody would be the planner that's actually going to process the case.
Are we fully staffed?
We are down one senior planner.
So I think I could answer that question or add on to that, Adam, is it's all how you set it up. And I think what we're looking at doing is is making it where an application comes in, it goes into a bucket. So it's not dependent on one staff person. It would go to a place where it'd be almost like think of an inbox in an office. So it would go to a place and then probably a senior planner would go and take a look at that submittal and then assign it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions before you just start going through bullet points?
Okay, Adam. All right, Kate, if we can put that back up. Okay, so I will have Sarah with Chris's help go through each of these items. I will chime in as necessary. If there's any questions along the way, please, please ask. As Chair Crandall mentioned, there's a lot of nuance here, especially when we're talking about discretionary authority. And that's that can be somewhat harder to translate in a presentation like this. So if there's any questions about what the implications of these types of changes would be, now is the time to ask. We will try to answer those questions as we move along. But like I said, these are, these are quite nuanced changes that can have some far-reaching implications.
Perfect. So I'm just going to go ahead and read it and then we can discuss. So the first one is going to be talking about signs. The first bullet is sign program with city planner approval, except for historic structures and signage on new development and major remodels approved through discretionary process. So for that signage allows subsequent review with ZA approval versus PC. And then Christopher, I don't know if you want to chime in to elaborate a little bit more about the history of these.
He, yeah, first, I want to jump back to a comment that Commissioner Crandall had mentioned for a little context here. I think it was like 2018, there was consideration of streamlining at that time. And this was one of the items that came up. Because we spent, so I wanted to just mention the 2018 effort because and Adam had pointed out, we've had a list of items. This is one that comes up because for any item on that that we're going to be discussing here, we put it on the list considering that oftentimes you go to a public meeting and there'll be no one showing up. There'll be no public comments. There's very little changes to conditions of approval. There's little to no public testimony or people showing up at meetings and public concern. So I for a little context there, just wanted to note a common theme of why these items are being presented to you. So sign programs, it just someone wants to put signs on their building. If they have four more signs, then they have to go to the planning commission and that seems a little excessive.
Ms. Chairman, if I could, can we come in as we go, just instead of saving it all up to the end? So signs are one of those things that I think no one cares about until it's ugly and people hate it. And then you have an outrage like what the heck are you doing? So so I I but I understand and appreciate everything you guys just said. My reading of this is you'd like the city planner to go ahead and approve signs, except if it's a historic structure and signage on new development and major remodels, that would continue as is, correct?
You're correct in in the process that you're describing the change to process. One thing I want to clarify is that these are these are identified, these are identified opportunities by staff. We are, we're taking the council's direction here. And when it comes to what is in the best interest of the city, it's it's the City Council with planning commission's input that's going to tell tell us how, you know, what what to do. I don't want to, I don't want to say that staff is is recommending that the city planner have this approval. We're saying there's an opportunity. This is a possible change, right? Whatever the City Council is is comfortable with is what we will support. So I just want to make that clear that these are not, we're not recommending these changes.
Right. My my sense is what we'll end up doing is going through these, discuss it as we go. If we don't agree, then maybe we slash it as we go. But if we do agree, then it just moves forward to the council, right? Something like that is the approach I hear.
Absolutely. Literally any feedback that the
Right. So I'm just clarifying that historic historic structures and signage on new development and major remodels would continue as the current process because I think those are the ones that really matter. And and you guys feel strong that your current signage ordinance or guidelines is in good shape and it's easy to administer.
Yes, essentially. Okay, yeah, we're 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 not going to identify something as an opportunity that we believe is going to be very difficult to to implement. So these are things that that staff feels comfortable that we can do. Whether it's it's the direction that the city would like to go in, that's up to the City Council and the planning with planning commission input.
With with this exception, I, just from my opinion, I'm good to go on that one. That makes sense. Yeah. Okay, I don't All of these that we might talk about, how does it affect posting for the public to know? Because I know when we have it on our agenda, there's posting requirements. If it goes to zoning administrator or if it goes to staff, how will the public still know that this happened?
That's a great question, Commissioner. There's a few, there's a there's a few possibilities here. The first is that according to the existing municipal code, staff level decisions typically do not have a noticing requirement. Now, there are some exceptions to that. There are wireless facilities that staff can approve that require a notice to neighbors within or property owners within 300 feet. If we rely on the existing code, something that goes from a planning commission or zoning administrator level to a city planner or or a community development director level would not require noticing. However, that doesn't mean that we cannot put something in the code that requires staff to notice people of those types of applications. Problem with that is that that type of notice is typically provided after the approval. So it doesn't really provide a lot of input. And that's the thing with administrative decisions is that they're objective, not subjective. There's no discretion. Staff cannot look at something and make a subjective determination about whether it meets the code or not. They they really need to be like yes or no questions, a specific height limits, things of things that we can identify, not things that that reasonable people could disagree about. And and staff's not supportive of of providing staff with that type of authority because it is that that type of decision really requires a public hearing. That's that's one of the points of public hearings.
Yeah, can I add on to that?
Please.
Yeah, so some cities still have a like a director level decision where they'll send a notice out. And if they hear comments, then they'll initiate a meeting. So there there are options out there that the city doesn't have in its current code. And we would have to explore those. So I think that for for this, I want to say even the prior times we've discussed streamlining, a lot of the discussion was centered around what level of review is most appropriate for the type of request, right? And there's things to consider like a public hearing, the amount of transparency and ability for the public to know a decision's going to be made and where is it an issue of high public concern or one that is more straightforward? Considering the things I mentioned, are there public comments at meetings? Are the issues complex? Are the is the type of request something that's more objective or subjective like Adam had mentioned? And so those are the the sort of things that were where when I said excessive about signs, it's just maybe, you know, that that kind of more sounds like we're making a firm recommendation. But it's more to the point of maybe perhaps it's not planning commission to city planner, but maybe it's to a zoning administrator. And it depends upon the City Council and your view of whether what level of review is appropriate to those factors that need to be considered.
Thank you, Chris. And then one other thing I will say, if if the proposed or potential streamlining opportunity identifies a going from a discretionary review to an administrative review, staff's recommendation would be that we do not create a noticing requirement for it. That's not something that we do a lot right now. And so in in terms of streamlining, to create new processes may be may not actually speed anything up for the applicants.
Okay, I'm going to jump in on this first point. I'm not comfortable with basically this is I think too vague. It doesn't talk about architectural overlay zones. It doesn't talk about designated city entries. It doesn't talk about freeway visible signage. And these do get a lot of public comment, particularly in the historic districts, our main thoroughfare down El Camino doing that. So I'm hesitant to leave anything this wide open at this point in time. There are certainly some if it's well, let's just pick Los Malinos District if there's Well, let's just pick Los Molinos District. If there's interior signage on there and they comply with all the city ordinances and whatnot. I I think things like that can be done at a uh. Staff level. As long as they comply with everything, but uh not those other sensitive.
I agree.
Areas.
Yeah. Yes, and uh that's a great point, uh Chair Crandall. We have not uh written the code like to propose this type of change. We have not gone through every iteration uh or every impact. These are very general. Recommendations uh for for uh potential um modifications to the code. So. I guess the the bigger picture question that we're trying to answer is. Could signs, could there be signs that we would want to? Or be uh supportive of having a lower level of review than uh than than it's currently set at.
With that clarification, I I I'm sure there are um ones like that and uh.
And it was just one other thing I apologize.
Go ahead.
The uh, the process at this point would be for uh the city council to um to take. The planning commission's recommendations and and uh staff's um presentation and decide. What the direction moving forward would be. And in any case, a zoning amendment. Would be initiated and it would come back to the planning commission. So this is not, these are not items that are anywhere near flushed out enough for um for the the council to simply. Approve in in their current form.
Okay, very good.
Can I clarify what you just said? Thank you. Um, in on the page uh on the front page, I guess it's ninety eight. Under project description, it does say that recommendations include simplification of some zoning applications. And then it goes down and says the proposed streamline would allow staff to make more decisions on these projects. And change some process levels from the planning commission to the Z A approved for Z A approval. So. You just said that as far as zoning, it would still come back to planning, but this says that it wouldn't come back to.
I'm I I in in my previous statement, I'm referring to the process to amend the code to make these changes. The the proposed or I want to say proposed, the um the potential opportunities to streamline. Those could be uh, those would include potentially include. Uh, knocking down a review level from planning commission to zoning administrator. But the actual act of amending the code would would require the planning commission to make a recommendation to the city council. So the these are, these are very general at this stage. But in order for this to be in uh enacted. We staff would need to get initiation from the council, create the ordinances, bring them back to the planning commission. Uh, for recommendation and then go back to the city council. So um at that time. The the commission would would be able to weigh in on what types of signs. They feel comfortable having at a lower level of review, say, for example.
Mr. Chair, since we have two and a half pages of bullets, uh what I'm thinking, just as a suggestion for context. We look at this as a brainstorming list that the staff has put together at the direction of the council. To come up with ideas to help streamline things. And that what we could do tonight is i- instead of doing a deep dive on each one of them. Uh, we could look at them as an idea and say, that's a good idea. And as you just said on the sign, say. Staff, let's make sure when you and let me just finish the complete thought. So what we would do is listen to this, maybe make some comments as we go with the idea that it goes to council with a recommendation from us. That the staff then define these in detail. And then return to us for the actual, you know, implementation of whatever changes are going to come about from the from the list. So this would be an initial pass. And then as the council authorizes the staff to work on this, then the staff would return to us, that's what I hear you saying, Adam. With, you know, piece by piece, probably with the implementation of, okay, this is now a revised sign program. Where staff would, just to use one, this as an example, will now administratively approve these signs. But these signs over here will continue to go as, you know, through public hearings, et cetera. So I'm thinking we don't need to necessarily design it tonight, just understand, okay, we understand the idea. And maybe we could just as we go chime in as you just did, Chair Crandall with. Hey, okay, but not freeway visible, not gateway and staff will take those notes. Maybe update this idea to maybe give it a little bit more structure. But the notion would be still, it's a night at the idea stage and then it'll come back. So we don't need to necessarily grind this down to.
I don't want to give them.
Is that what kind of I think the.
That would certainly make our meetings evening a lot quicker. Uh, but I think staff wants some direction.
Yeah.
Of uh, it just doesn't go off on a tangent.
No, exactly, as we go.
Money that uh, one, they don't have the time.
Um, yeah.
Or the money. To take just a a blind pot shot at.
No, no, I think we should chime in as we go, just as you did. I think those were good comments and we just should just keep proceeding with those, just everyone just chime in with those refined comments.
Okay, anybody have any comments on additional comments on bullet point one?
No, but I was just going to say. I have five concerns about the whole list.
I have.
And that would be my feedback to the council. Number one would be anything that affects posting of notice. Because that affects the public's ability in what's now in the code to be notified of the change. That's number one big. Number two.
Commissioner, uh, do you mind if I ask some for some clarification on that item?
Sure.
So uh, as as Chris Wright mentioned, a lot of these ideas come from the fact that we do a lot of noticing. That never generates any public concern.
And.
Um, are you?
Are you?
Are you? Agree, but are you um, is your um, is your recommendation? That if it requires a public hearing now that it, or excuse me, if it requires noticing now. That it should continue to require noticing.
I think so.
Okay.
I would disagree with that. So not to not have an argument, but well, one person's comment is not reflective of.
So you can. I'm not, I'm my apologies. I I that's that's not staff's, that's not staff's impression here. We would love to just get everybody's comments and at a meeting like this, it can. Get a little bit difficult, which is why we kind of want each item.
Yeah.
And just have everybody give us what their concerns or um ideas for improvement. Um, expansion on on the idea. Any comments that you have and we will compile all of that in our presentation to the city council.
Can I just say one quick thing? Is that just, I just want to note that these are, these are bullet points and the details could matter. So there could be changes that involve the appeals process. So maybe some of these changes would go more into the planning commission for review as a. As an appeal body, there could be changes to the way decisions are reported. You know, it's not just this in isolation. If you have comments regarding. If we're going to make a change and something else would have to give, that would be also good input to get from you.
And I think a lot of these bullet points don't give us the information even to give you enough feedback. Like my question will always be, does it involve, we would no longer notice? Or anything that involves with parking is involved not giving notice or anything with removing a C U P. That's already a current C U P, I would probably have probably have a problem without notice. And, you know, people are always concerned about density. So if we give away administrative approval, it's like we are removing. Any knowledge from the public farther away from them. And giving it to the administrative rather than the sovereign, which is the public who put us here in the first place.
Yeah, that is, that is an excellent point, Commissioner.
Even if there's a disagreement, I think anytime that we're limiting the public input. You have to be careful that we're not doing a disservice because the public, when they realize that they haven't been noticed. Be here.
Yeah. Yeah, so I um, I want to, I I want to propose a potential structure to this conversation. Just so that we're it it's as a as an effective uh use of time as possible. If the um commission would like to make a recommendation to the planning commission. Um, which is not really what we're actually asking because the council requested feedback from the uh from the uh commission. Uh, you, you could make an actual motion here. However, the motion would probably be very. Difficult and confusing for each one of these types of comments to be bundled up in one recommendation. If you want to maybe take straw votes as we go through as far as how much support there is for each particular item, we can do that. Or we, you can just make your all of your comments and then they will be um. They will be uh put into a a general list. For the council's consideration. Keep in mind, this is a special presentation. At the city council. So there's, it it's not a staff report. And so a lot of this information will need to be somewhat condensed. Ultimately, the council. Ultimately, the council was supportive of most of these items. They just, they wanted feedback. So I want to make, I just want to make sure that.
I I liked your.
Mm-hmm.
Last one to to include. I don't think we're going to get a consensus on. Any one item at this point in time because there's not enough detail. But if you can certainly pass along uh the comments that were made and the concerns as. List of concerns uh with that particular item, that's great.
Yes, and and keep in mind uh when this. Should these items be initiated by the council? When it comes back to the planning commission, it will need to get a consensus uh vote. So you will have an opportunity at that time uh to really get into the to the specifics on it.
I think we, I just to chime in. I think we should just take it up a level and say, these are just ideas. And so if, as I hear my colleague down here. Talk about public notice, what maybe a solution for us to do is say, staff. Maybe it's a good part of the working framework for moving forward. This is when you will be making a cha- change. That will remove public notice, flag it. At that this is a public notice reduction. So that in the, when we go through round two of this, to review the specific defined. Strategy that you're going to actually implement, those actual things are highlighted. So that's what I would do. I would take comments like this, move it up a level and say. Could you as, you know, when you go to the council or when you come back, highlight. Anything where public notice is reduced or eliminated that stands out. That will help us later. And the council understand the implication of the change without getting into the specifics. We would just say generically, let's just highlight those.
Absolutely, Commissioner.
Right. I think that gets at the concern. And we can debate it later at the at the right time.
Yeah, and I and I'll say this, um, if if that is a consistent concern of yours. Uh, would you um, would it, would you feel comfortable if we take note that it would apply? To any change that removes public notice. Otherwise, when we go through this list, I can have staff say. You know, to the extent that we can, based on the generality of 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 the bullets, uh at this point, this will remove public noticing. And then you could make a comment. That we could apply that comment to that particular um list. Or like I said, that's just a general comment related to all of the items, whether they may or may not reduce public noticing.
I was thinking that. Yeah, well, what I was thinking is. Since these are ideas, you're going to go back to council and they're going to say, we like all these days, go do them. What does go do it mean? To me, go do it means, okay. Pull together now a new process and whatever that implication cascades down to, if it's an update to the zoning. If it's an update to a procedure, if it's an update to a whatever, then those would be worked on. So what you're, what the council's going to do at the next meeting is not ratify these. They're simply going to authorize you to go work on them. You will then work on them in detail. You're going to define them. You're going to decide, oh, this needs to be changed here. This needs to be changed there. And then once you've done that work program, you'll return. You'll return to the commission with those new definition like, okay, we're now going to propose to you a change to the, let's just say, the sign program as follows. It's at that return meeting, we can get into the details.
That that is correct, but I'll 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 go one level deeper.
Okay.
Uh, there's a very high likelihood that we would come back during a for a study session. To just get initial comments um before we start going into creating what staff believes. The commission would 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 like to see um and spending all that time, we'd rather come and get that. Initial feedback on each specific item as we have been uh directed by the council to start working on it. After the study session, once we flush it out, we would bring it back as a proposed ordinance. And at that time, the commission would would weigh in on what staff is proposing as the final version of that.
Very good. Let's keep on moving down these bullet points. And I think.
I just, I I just wanted to clarify, I absolutely support a web-based tracking to streamline this. I think that's where a lot of the delays are. And I will, as we go through this, I will personally flag my concerns, public notice. Upgrades to code. And or any updates and upgrades to current zoning. So those are the three that that I can see them through here. And so it would help me if I just knew what they all were. I think there's A D U discussed in here, height levels discussed in here, uh property lines discussed in here, but they're all over the place. So I want them in an order where I can see where the changes are going to to be as if those could be flagged.
Yeah, so staff's attempt here was to um provide the list that was provided to the city council, which is again kind of a running list of opportunities. Um, what we did with the PowerPoint was try to simplify this information. And when we go through each line, Sarah and and Chris will provide as as. I'll say is flushed out of uh the idea as as staff has contemplated it so far.
Okay.
So um, so uh, just to um go back um to some original comments made by Commissioner Prescott and Commissioner McCacken. Uh, did you have general comments about the like the entire thing? Or would you like to just go through bullet by bullet, provide those comments as we go and maybe at the end? Provide any comments that haven't been captured in one of the lines.
I already gave my thoughts already.
Were were those? Okay. And then speaking of those, um, can you could, do you mind just clarifying the the uh statement about zone changes?
Well, there was some comment back here, as I mentioned on the first page, uh that proposal streamlining. Would allow staff to make more decisions on these projects and change some process levels from planning commission to a zoning administrative. Approval. So I would like those flagged as to what those are, so I could see that. And uh, the other one was the public notice and similar with uh the code. It's changing. If I could have it organized, but it will do that as we go forward.
Yes, and um, and just to uh, Chris will uh and Sarah will be able to provide some examples of what those changes would be. But again. The amount of time it would take to thoroughly go through the code and identify all the possibilities.
Not asking.
Haven't, yeah.
Just in general, if you could just point me that direction or just flag it.
Absolutely, yeah. All right, Sarah.
Okay, uh, any more comments on bullet point one? Little bullet point two.
Okay, perfect. Monument signs.
Excuse me.
Monument signs. The bullet, a bullet two first under signs, uh so monument signs with city planner approval. When they consolidate advertisement of multiple tenants. Christopher, do you want to elaborate a little bit on this? So I believe in our code right now.
This.
Go ahead, sir.
This is a consolidating?
Yes, it's a second bullet.
Okay, yeah, the consolidating is more than anything else, a customer service item to simplify our applications. We have a quite a lot of applications is where there are similar findings. And I it can be confusing for the public and just takes more staff time, which just for the purposes of streamlining, anything we can do to simplify work for staff will result in applications being processed faster. So in some respect, it is streamlining. The more we can do to help staff move things along, the faster it will move. And in that regard, it is streamlining. There's already been some effort put into this item. There is by Council action to initiate changes for batch amendments, but we just got directed to work on other things. The the work that's been done to date, for example, would change, it would consolidate site plan permits, minor site plan permits, minor architectural permits, architectural permits, and staff waivers of architectural permits, all into one application called the site. I think it's Site Development Permit. And that would be an application that would be required for things such as projects in the architectural overlay. So right now, that's a culture heritage permit. That so the scope of the the that application would be anything other than a project proposed on a historic site. Culture Heritage permits would be solely devoted to historic properties, historic sites and districts. And so you would also consolidate a number of applications because those findings are different and the intent of that permit is different. By doing all those changes, you would have less application forms. You can make it simpler for intake of applications online and our database. And it could save time for staff to write staff reports and findings that could speed up the process.
Did change any notice to the public?
No. What would change are the idea behind this item is not to change who reviews applications, but to to merge applications. So the other items on these slides are more related to who reviews certain types of requests. And that would be reflected in the application. Does that? There's a distinction there. Does that make sense?
Are these monument signs that the city planner would already have approval to give?
No. So, for example, okay, so signs, you mentioned monument signs. There is an administrative sign permit application. There's a discretionary sign permit application. And the the monument signs are discretionary permit application. Okay. But there's two applications. You could merge those together and keep the process exactly the same. You could still require Planning Commission for a monument sign and require staff approval for a small little wall sign, but you would just be reducing the number of applications. That's it. It's just changing, reducing the number of applications is the last item on this list. It's not changing the process. It's reducing the amount of work, which would then free up staff to move more projects along. That's the last item on this slide.
So you're saying less forms?
Less forms, less writing.
And yes, and also an easier to navigate website. There's a lot of information on the planning's website. And so the simpler that can be, the easier it is for applicants to find the information that they need, not have to call to ask questions that really, you know, should be easier to answer on, things of that nature.
Okay, so are we on to Bullet Point Two? I'll make a comment on this one. Once again, it's extremely vague. Monument signs, their whole purpose is to consolidate tenant information on the sign. They go through and ninety percent of them go through the design review process because they need to reflect the character of the buildings and have an architectural style that is complementary to the zone they're in and all. So I think that one needs to be carefully looked at as far as that's concerned. They have a right to monument signs and how big it can be and whatnot. But in a good percentage of them, because commercial buildings have to get the design in most cases as a Spanish colonial revival character, if possible. I would be more comfortable if when any project comes through, they process their signage program with the project. So it's not a separate item all at all that because a lot of times to make their job easier, they'll come in with a a project that they could have included their signage program in. They get their approval of their project and then they start pushing the limits on their signage. And that's why those things slow down and get more complicated. So I think we give them the option of doing it upfront. And I think that would certainly ease the burden on staff. And I think Christopher's been through that process before of having the signage programs postponed till after the building processes or the building itself has been approved. Do you have any comment on that, Chris? Chris?
You're muted, Chris.
I thought you covered it really well. I don't know. I don't know if I have a lot to add to that.
Yeah, okay. You know, I Chair Crandall, I will say one thing, you brought up a really good point about the design review related to monument signs. This, in order for this to become a city planner approval, we would essentially need codified design guidelines. When this, if this were to be initiated, staff would then have to tie that work into an existing project that we have in our in our books about objective design standards. If this amendment at the text, if it did not of like, if it did not capture the essence of the, you know, the required architecture, that that could be a problem and, you know, at at that time when we're bringing it back. But at this point, just kind of an assumption that 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 would that that could be done as part of this particular item. So it it there are there are some, you know, some some bridges to cross as we go through this. And staff's aware that design review is 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 a tricky one. Because if it if it gets knocked down to an administrative review, we need, we need objective standards that we can easily review projects against.
Yep, very good. Can I wait? Could I? Two here? Well, on your comment. Okay, so are you suggesting that sign submit will be mandatory with the project submittal or optional?
That's enough. That it's one of the options, certainly, or a recommendation to that it would be a quicker pro- quicker process.
I mean, I I would I would like the applicants to have the flexibility to do either or because it's a huge scramble just to get your project in. You don't even know if it's going to get approved. You don't know if it's going to be approved in that form. And then you might be changing surfaces that signs are going on. It's just more upfront, you know, trying to get a project moving.
They could consider that. Instruct the applicant, it would be quicker if you did it now, if you want to wait. Take it a little longer to get your science through.
Makes sense.
Okay, the next one.
Yes, so we already kind of talked about this is the simplifying applications. And Christopher has mentioned, you know, we can consolidate some applications that have similar findings. So I didn't know if you want to talk about that some more or if you guys have any comments, feedback?
I I believe that staff has presented this item if there's any comments.
At least what Christopher said made a lot of sense. If you have ten things, someone scratching their head, oh, which one is mine? And you only have now three, that simplifies it. And I think that's in essence what you're trying to do. Yeah.
Okay, so move on to the next one.
Okay, so the next one's a little bit cumbersome, so we're just going to kind of do it little by little. So this in this is in regards to development for residential new and additions. So the first bullet, it's for currently new development and additions over five hundred square feet on sites with three plus units within three hundred feet of residential zone, historic district structures are subject to PC approval. Sorry, this sort of cultural heritage permit, except for projects, one, not visible from right of way adjoining historic structure sites, two, not in a cultural overlay, and three, not abutting historic structures, four, not on sites with historic structure sites, or five, not visible from the public view corridor. And then with this one is new buildings and additions over five hundred square feet require PC approval. Staff suggests allowing projects with city planner approval versus PC if located one hundred to three hundred feet from historic structures.
Okay, I will say, we've had a lot of projects presented that do impact greatly historic structures, even if they're a hundred to three hundred feet away, particularly on view corridors or wherever. And I would invite Larry, do you like to make any comment on this patch of items? Well, that that's a comment that's and for those who don't know Larry, he is, are you still Chair of the Cultural the Historic Society? So this is, this is kind of what the city has built itself around being this Spanish with by the sea. And it's is a high public visibility issue. And we've certainly experienced a lot of applications that do impact historic structures. And it's always debatable. I'm sure Larry doesn't think I'm push hard enough on it, but I try to balance both sides of the equation. But I see this probably being something outside the this streamlining one. It's such a sensitive item to the city that I think it deserves some really intense consideration. It should be probably done on a separate issue.
I could support Bart's comments.
Yeah, duly noted. Also, on this type of item, the public hearing notice or notice to the to the notice to property owners within three hundred feet of the project would not occur if if it for those projects between a hundred and three hundred feet, if they were reviewed by the city planner instead of a public hearing body, which then means that the historic historical society would not generally get noticed of it. Because those projects typically then wouldn't go through our development management team meeting because there's there's no need for that that staff support for a discretionary permit. So that would be, that would be the impact of the of not noticing these types of applications, both for a property owner, but also for groups around the city that are very interested and concerned with the impacts to historic resources.
So, Mr. Chair, your gentle, I guess, suggestion is, could we maybe not have, strike this one? Take it off the plate as an idea.
I think it is so complicated, it serves to be, and we see them because they come to us right now, but in the big picture, there aren't all that many compared to.
I think we've had, since I've been on in the last year, maybe three. Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. There are not that many. Chris or Sarah, could you speak to the 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 impact that this change potentially could make for for call it the applicants that are looking to propose these types of projects? Is this is this something that we're anticipating a significant impact? Or is this one of those items where we're?
Do you want me to comment on that one, Sarah?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah, so we get, I I went and tried to look at our database. We get maybe one or two of the first row. So a project a hundred to two hundred, a hundred to three hundred feet from a historic building, keeping in mind some projects that involve triplexes or fourplexes within three hundred feet of a residentially zoned historic building are exempt if they're not visible from the historic property, if they're not visible in a view corridor and not an architectural relay. So there are exemptions that so but this would mean our projects that are visible, they're in a view corridor, or they're in an architectural overlay. What this suggestion here is, is reducing the level of view in the the limited instance when it's a hundred to three hundred feet from historic buildings. That means at least three properties away. And it is not visible in a view corridor and it is not an architectural overlay. So it's like three, three or more properties away, three to six or three to ten. We get maybe one a year, one to two a year of these. So I I just figure you want to go row by row, right, Adam?
Yes, and and that's exactly what I was for. So a change like this is going to take, you know, a bit of staff time to 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 work on for one application a year. That doesn't mean that in the future, we couldn't get a lot more of these applications. Just typically, we're only seeing about one application that would where this change would apply.
And and also just to note, the reason why this item's on the list is this idea that that the situation would be, it's at least three properties away. So the massing of a building is going to be separated at least a hundred feet away and and staff questions that that has potential often is going to have potential masking impact on a historic building.
Yes, thank you, Chris. One thing I I remember being discussed and when we were talking about this, I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the Commission. There are, there are still appeal rights for all of these projects, whether they're at zoning administrator, planning commission level or city planner level. I I remember a brief discussion about appeals. But one thing to keep in mind with a city planner appeal is that the the decision is not always noticed, and most of the time it's not. And it's, there's a two-week appeal period for a decision that may not actually be implemented until after the the decision's been made. So while everything's appealable, a city planner decision is not always obvious that it it has occurred and without noticing to to neighboring properties, there's many times where they there would be no there'd be no indication that there it would be something to appeal.
There would be no remedy for this.
Essentially, yeah.
But that's the property. That's something you can consider, though, in making this change. But that's the property. That's something you can consider, though, in making this change, that in fact. That the. City planners' decision on something like that is noticed to those property owners, right?
Yes.
Consider that as a solution to that.
Exactly. And so that. This, this brings up that that initial point of prioritization. For this type of item, we're talking about. One, let's, let's call it at at best, three applications a year. Where we now have a new process of noticing something and. And we're going to spend time potentially revising the code. This, this doesn't, this doesn't really seem like the biggest impact. That we have on this list. So. Just something to keep in mind.
Let's keep this moving. Do we have any more comments on this one? Let's go to the next.
Sure. So the fifth bullet is single family and duplex. This is for new additions over five hundred square feet. Are subject to PC approval of cultural heritage permits located across the street from historic buildings. Staff suggests allowing projects with city planner approval versus PC if the project site is not in their architecture overlay.
Yeah, I think also a part of that, oh wait. The next one is regarding whether it's visible or not, right? So am I getting that mixed up?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, sorry. So did you want me to add anything to this one? I mean, I I let me just explain briefly why it might be on here. It's just, it's removed from a historic building. It's across the street. And streets are at minimum forty feet wide. So we're looking at at least. With, and then with the front setback, you're looking at. Probably a range of fifty to seventy feet away from a historic building, at least.
Or, okay. Any other?
I'm curious how you think that across the street differs than down the street.
Not a lot. Scale makes all the difference in the world because it's the street scene we're looking for. There's going to be design guidelines of trying to step back from the historic structure and the massing. So. I still think that needs a. Design review or. It'll involve coming up with more exacting design guidelines, which is going to be a huge effort.
Yeah, almost impossible.
Maybe that's thrown into the same concept of.
Yeah, you know what? That's a great point. You know, I just want to mention, some of these ideas were discussed, like I, I think I said in two thousand eighteen perhaps. And the reason why they didn't occur is this that concern about design guidelines. Not being updated at the time. And so the the direction was to hold off on some of these ideas. But nevertheless, you know, the city council wanted us to identify various items. And these are items that. They were, they were seen as favorable items, a bunch of these, but then it didn't move forward because the lack of updated design guidelines primarily is what I recall. As a a main point made at the time.
I think this is a good example of. Commissioner Cosgrove was saying. If something like that were to stay there, give our comments and. Pass that along to council with. With the discussion and exactly what Chris also said. So we can move on to the next one.
But it doesn't mean the person who lives in the historic building across the street wouldn't get noticed because we take it out of the.
That's another issue that needs to be identified, absolutely.
So Chair Randall, just to clarify, um, for that one.
I just wanted some clarification, especially on the items where it appears like the planning commission is leaning towards a not support. On the last, on the. I, the first item of the one hundred to three hundred feet. I heard from three, at least three commissioners, that they're not supportive of that. On the last one. I think I only heard from two.
You mean across the street?
Yeah, the across the street. If it, if the commission is not supportive of something, I prefer to get there like more.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement.
Okay, I just want to make that that clear because that kind, that that kind of comment is. Is going to be important for the council's consideration.
And I think one of the comments is that it's so complicated. Streamlining and impact of this for the overall picture of the permit processing is. I don't think the benefit.
May not even be possible.
Is is there, so.
You, you know, I do want to mention, even though on the right we have proposed process, it doesn't necessarily have to be that. Like, for example, it could be zoning administrator hearing instead of planning commission hearing. That's still a public notice. So it it just want to point out, it does not have to be exactly this. Is there some? Alternative to the current process that the planning would commission would support for each of these? That would be helpful to know.
I don't think we know all those options yet. Steph needs to present that to us.
You know, for me, if there's notice or notices being taken away, that would satisfy a lot of me. So where you have going from zoning administrator or anything else away from planning commissioner, which removes notice, I'm always going to have. An allergy to it.
Then we will make it clear as we've gone through this list, whether that's the case or not. You know, I I I will say. We we do have a couple pages to go through. However, going through this process. And previously, in a in other, for other reasons. The first couples tend to take a little bit more time because we're kind of working on that. So I'm not, I'm I'm not terribly concerned at this point. We'll just keep going through, and I think we'll.
Yeah, if you would indulge us, maybe.
We'll streamline the streamlining.
Yeah, maybe just if you would indulge us and you, if there's a consensus like, well, we don't think that's a good idea. Maybe the way to accommodate it is you reformat your report. You don't have to remove it, but maybe you have two sections. Here's a section where, you know, we read all this at the planning commission. These are the items that, you know, flow through. This is this other section are the items that we heard from them. We don't think it's a good idea to pursue.
Absolutely.
And then they still see it, but then at the benefit of our deliberation.
Exactly. That is exactly what we're looking for.
Okay, cool.
Adam, relative to noticing, if if an approval gets kicked down from planning commission to zoning administrator. Public notices still go out, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the same noticing.
The same, yeah.
Same radius, same information.
They would just have to show up to a ZA hearing instead of a PC meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
The ZA zoning administrator hearings tend to be at three o'clock on Thursdays. Wednesdays, yeah, sorry, designer reviews on Thursday. It would be a three o'clock meeting on a Wednesday versus a six o'clock meeting. On on a Wednesday. So there's. There's also an availability issue. And the reason that. The meetings are during the day is because zoning administrator. Level permits tend to have less public concern. So there, we would generally find fewer people going to those meetings, regardless of when they were held.
Okay, but you you would still be available to receive letters and.
Absolutely.
You would make it probably make yourself available to a call in if someone couldn't make it.
To the extent that the law allows us to provide opportunity for public input, we would make that available.
Conceivably do that for everything we do.
Yeah.
Which we don't want to see happen.
Because now you're leading into zoning administrator saying to the same Brown Act requirements, all fair hearing requirements that we are noticing requirements.
Yes, the zoning administrator, though, is just one person, so.
Quite the same review.
Yeah. Application of the Brown Act doesn't.
Somebody who works eight to five. Otherwise, I should be counsel. I'd like to meet at twelve o'clock.
Yeah. Okay, I think. That's, so the next one is the minor remodels?
Yes, so for the minor minor remodels slash additions to single family and duplex. And this is in regards to adjoining to historic structures sites, not in the architecture overlay. And there's one, two, three, there's four bullet points. Should I read each one?
Yes.
Allow additions under fifty percent with ZA approval versus PC if not screened from the street. Currently, the limit is five hundred square feet with ZA approval. Allow staff to approve additions under fifty percent that are screened from the street. Allow ZA to approve accessory buildings visible from the street currently PC approved. Allow staff to approve accessory buildings screened from the street. And then. The last bullet talks about allow the continuation of legal nonconforming side setbacks with city planner approval versus ZA.
Okay. On the first one. Does anyone have any comment on? I mean, it's, again, it's very vague. We're saying a five hundred square foot addition, ZA approval. If. First, if not screened from street, currently the limit is five hundred square feet.
So currently, if you do more than a five hundred square foot addition, you have to go to the planning commission regardless of whether you see the addition or not.
Okay, if it's clarified, I can, I can understand. We're trying to do the street view, but we also have cases where. I can't think of an example, but. Or let's say it's on coastal plus. And you have a historic building that has a wonderful view from the back, not a view, but of it. And somebody wants to push their five hundred square foot addition down to the backyard. And block the view for the public of that historic building. I think that's something that should be considered in when you're reviewing this one item.
That's a good point. Yeah, we, I mean, that, if anything, if there's any openness to this idea. And that, that there, this could be a category of projects where perhaps it's. There's some merits to the idea of reducing review, then there could be parameters for that that you give us. Like, don't do it in these instances, you know, that might be one of them.
That would be a solution, I think.
Adam, in in all of these, is there kind of an escape hatch where? Let's say it's at a staff level or ZA or city planner, whoever. But if it's in the box for you guys to approve it, but if you're not comfortable, you can kick it up to. Up the up up a level.
That does exist to to some extent. Chris, would you mind? Elaborating on exactly what that is and and was, is is that type of safety valve contemplated in these changes? And you're muted.
Yeah, on any of these changes, there would, there's already a mechanism in the code. That enables for a lower level to bump up a review to a higher body. So like, let's just take the extreme city planner. Let's say something was streamlined, streamlined and went down to the city planner review. City planner could look at an application and say, you know, this looks like a public concern. I I don't feel comfortable making this decision. There needs to be more transparency, whatever. I'm going to bump this up to the zoning administrator or the planning commission that could be specified. The zoning administrator, same thing. There's already that in the code. And then also, there are some times when. A project doesn't require designer review said committee review by default. The city planner will look at an application or the review body and like a zoning administrator and. If they find that a project does not meet the design guidelines, or it could benefit from some additional input. They have the authority to afford it to the designer view set committee.
Excellent. Thank you, Chris. Did that answer your question?
It did, thank you.
How these other items. C A approval accessory builds visible from the street. I don't know. Where that's going to happen or trying to think of an example. I can't. Allow staff to approve accessory buildings screened from the street. I can't even think of an example of that. A corner lot, maybe where the backyard is sides, the street.
So an example, that would be a garage, a detached garage.
You're considering that accessory building?
Yes.
The example problem with that one. Okay, I won't see any other comments on that one, but not ADUs. These are ADUs. We have no say in those.
Yeah, we we couldn't change the process for ADUs. Those are administrative only.
Okay, let's move on to the next one. Legal nonconforming setbacks?
Yes, allow the continuation of legal nonconforming side setbacks with city planner approval versus ZA. Or zoning.
Probably the ZA, the planner could be the same person, that's one person approval, correct?
This, the city planner and the zoning administrator, at one time, I want to say for two years, three years, were the same. Were staffed by the same person. However. Historically, the zoning administrator is staffed by the community development director. And the city planner is a manager underneath the community development director.
And the same noticing.
Correct, for the zoning administrator.
I don't have any. On that one at this point. I would think about that. Okay, let's move along.
So it'll be development portion. Yes, so this will be bullet point number eight. This is for nonresidential accessory buildings with ZA approval versus PC. Chris, can you elaborate on this? I think this is one of the ones that you and I had discussed.
Yes. So this is an item where our zoning code requires planning commission approval of. It would be a site plan permit, an architectural permit. Or cultural disfromment and a conditional use from it. All planning commission review to build, say, a garage for a commercial building. And. The idea behind this is that that would be a zoning administrator approval for an accessory type of building. Accessory buildings support the primary building. So it would not be like a retail space. It would be a facility like a storage building or a garage. Some sort of equipment facility, trashing, trashing, trash enclosure wouldn't be one because it's a structure, but. That that those categories of development, that it would bump it from a planning commission review to zoning administrator.
Okay, this is going to be for development for accessory structures. So the first bullet in that one is accessory structures, and this applies to all sites. Allow the city planner approval where a project has proposed. Materials and design in character with the primary building's appearance and has a height and size that maintain the. Visible focus of the primary buildings from the public right of way and support an open street scene along the block. On the same side of the street as the project.
You have an example of what that would be?
Christopher, do you have a good example on this one?
Yeah, you know. This is one where it's like a fence. You know, our staff waiver section. It says that you can approve accessory structures. But I think this effort would be to add some language to clarify what type of accessory structures are more appropriate. For an administrator view, such as adding language for. Is it in character with the primary building as a height and size that maintain? Visual focus of primary buildings from the street. Support and open streets. Those that language there is. To make it easier for both the public and the city planner to know what is the line that shouldn't be crossed to approve a structure like a fence. Or patio cover or some other. Deck, those sort of improvements. Does that answer your question?
That tightened up a little bit just far as language on that.
I think it's.
It is has a lot of interpretation. You know, once you make these changes. The person who might be doing this may not be there at the next time, so it it's it doesn't leave a lot of direction.
Yeah, I mean, right now the city planner is able to approve some of these structures. So this is if anything would provide additional clarity.
I think what might help us and city council. If in parentheses, something, a quick example of this affects. Might be prudent. To get through these things quick.
He absolutely agree, and I will say Commissioner Prescott, that's a great point. That some of these items do provide. A bit of discretion for city staff and. Those that discretion would need to be tampered down with objective standards, which we would. Staff would want to include in any ordinance that would make this type of change.
So under the same, sorry, can I move? Yeah, so under the same section we. For bullet point number ten, it'll be height of residential accessory buildings eliminate. Conditional use permit to allow the city planner approval of accessory buildings. Up to the height limit of the zone versus fifteen feet if they comply with setbacks.
So how's this a streamlining item?
That's a techy item because now you're back in residential. And this is something that could be seen by the neighbor.
He.
Yeah, so.
You're moving it to the city planner, not the zone administrator. Taking it from a quasi legislative body to what seems like a quasi judicial body. And I'm not sure what the rights of appeal are to the neighbor.
So something to consider is there are opportunities where a very similar structure. Could be built if attached to the primary structure. Whereas if it's separated by five feet, then all of a sudden it requires a conditional use permit.
But doesn't detached accessory structure have a different side yard setback? Than the main structure?
It it does.
So all of a sudden, we're crowding something full height, so I think that's a problem.
Well, well, point.
Well, it it says if it complies with setbacks.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so accessory structure, so it gets to be closer.
Yeah, I believe what Chris was, what we were intending for this was that it meets the setbacks of the primary for primary structures. Is that correct?
Yes, like Adam just pointed out, you could make, you could do an addition to the house. That's twenty five feet. It's attached. But you detach it now. It's a fifteen foot high limit. If anything, that penalizes people for reducing massing and having a five foot setback between the spaces.
But can it be closer to the side yards property line?
No, the only way that you would be able to qualify for this is if you fully meet the setbacks of the primary building.
I didn't say that. And I'm a little concerned about the way we're approaching this. Because we have. The nonconforming setbacks on the primary house, the way this is written, let's say it's a three foot. The accessory building could be within three foot and be the full height of the house, correct? Which is really affecting light and but not to the rear yard of the adjacent neighbor.
So if that's the the way that the language in the any proposed ordinance. Leaves it, then then yes, but I can tell you staff is not going to be interested in providing. A an administrative approval for something that is very likely to be. An issue or. Received public concern, especially from neighbors. I'm not comfortable approving a three foot setback and. You know, a detached building that goes over the.
Put that concern as if were made on as a response to this bullet item, and I'm comfortable with that.
I I had actually tagged this one, and if. If if staff wouldn't would have a concern or might have concern, I'm not seeing how this would streamline the process then. Because it is vague and it does, it mentions that now the height limit will be equal to. So staff should have a concern, I would think, at that point. And how does it comply with the setbacks? So I'm just wondering how this streamlines.
Yeah, can I can I comment on that? So let's say that, let's just be kind of precise here. So let's say you want to build a house. And the house has to have a five foot side yard setback and a ten foot rear yard setback. You can build up to twenty five feet tall. All the way up to those setbacks. But if you want to separate space and have a detached building. For some reason. Now that separate building is smaller than the house, meets all the same setbacks, has a fifteen foot height limit. You have reduced the density of development on the property and you have a lower high limit. And meet all the same setbacks.
But if the sidewall's eight feet, you still have a building that now shows seven feet to the neighbor, right?
The same setbacks as a primary building.
Fifteen feet, seven more feet than eight feet.
No, it's a fifteen foot height limit.
Right, but this, but the block wall next to that structure, even though it meets setbacks, what's our maximum block wall, eight feet?
I'm not, I'm not following you.
This this added accessory structure. Meets the side yard setback, right? The wall that separates the two properties is eight feet. You let them now build a fifteen foot structure. So from the yard next door where they used to have nothing, they now have seven feet of building or some kind of structure. And because it's now no longer a conditional use permit. They won't know about it.
So, but if it were the house, they could have it twenty five feet tall, so. Why is a detached building more impactful than a house? That's, I think that's the question.
Let me, let me see if I can clarify what we're talking about. If you, if you're, if you're looking at a property and it's got setbacks. As long as you meet like the lot coverage, all right, you can have a, let's say, a building that's twenty five feet tall. Anywhere in here, that's a primary structure. If you have a detached structure that's still within that box, still complies with that lot structure, that lot coverage. That detached one can only be fifteen feet tall. But if you were to attach that structure to the primary structure, now all of a sudden that. Detached structure could go up to twenty five feet because it would be attached, because it would be attached.
Right, but what we're changing is that detached structure before the person next door would have had notice.
And so there's an incentive for people to build more on their property. That's that's what that.
Owner, I'm talking about the next door neighbor. In the old system, he would know if they're going to have a deep, they want to do a detached. You know, a structure because we go to the planning, it would be a C U P.
But the.
But the point what they were trying to make is that you can build a bigger building if it's all one building. Then two smaller structures.
I don't care about that.
But the circumstances aren't the same. But the C U P is if they don't meet the setbacks, if they have the building right on the property line, then they need the C U P. This would be different. This would be saying you have to meet the setbacks to not have the C U P.
Right, but you would still have the accessory structure, right? Or before that accessory structure would require a C U P.
Correct, so, all right.
So that's what I'm saying. You're taking away the notice of the neighbor next door to streamline. No situation, and I started to develop an allergy about making it administratively easy. But more difficult for the citizenry to know that something's happening.
Right, and.
Because they otherwise would be noticed.
And I'm not arguing, I'm not arguing, yes, I'm not arguing that there isn't a need for public noticing. What I'm saying is that there. This is, this is an odd section of code because what it allows, what it allows is if you build in a detached accessory structure that's sixteen feet tall. You have to get a C U P. But if you connect those two structures. Then that building that required a C U P can now go up to twenty five feet with no C U P. Simply because they've been, they've been. Joined. So it it like it's in the same place. You can do, you could actually build more without going through a public process if you simply attach the buildings. That's, that's the whole point of this is that it's kind of incentivizing more development. Because it's easier to go through just a building permit for a twenty five foot addition. To a primary structure than to go through a sixteen foot. Tall detached accessory structure in the exact same location.
Difference becomes, is it an accessory building or is additional living space? Accessory building is not necessarily living space.
Right.
He says, I thought this is like shit. So it could be. Anything.
Good, so.
I think that's the concern, and that's historically how it came about. I mean, if, okay.
No, I I really agree.
Going to be a stable.
I'm, I've, I've, I've made, I've fought for this. And I I I comfortable with with the statements that staff has made. I. I understand your concerns and will redirect that to the council.
Adam, this says city planner. If it's a zoning administrator, then the neighbors would get noticed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so.
But this is just a straight code change instead of seven people.
I think it would help to have a drawing of this. No, not right now. I'm just saying. Like, we, we've seen this on plans and staff for years has wondered. Why, why do we have this? This is like the number one thing I've always wondered. For eighteen years, why this is a C U P? This would be target number one for me.
Yes.
Now, it doesn't that one go away with the next bullet point? The height of the accessory dwelling units from, oh, now that's accessory dwelling. It's an A D U. That's an A D U. How do we have any say in the height of that at all?
Currently, we, Adam, do you want to say that, talk?
Yeah, so, okay, right now, a an accessory dwelling unit. By right. Requires a height limit no taller than fifteen feet. You can go over fifteen feet if you apply for an architectural permit. This would remove that requirement because the the height limit of the zone is maintained.
That would be an absolute no.
To to refine that a little bit. We had this in place under our last A D U ordinance. This is exactly what was in place. Where the height limit was based on the primary building. So if you wanted an A D U. You couldn't go higher than the primary building because you would see the primary building. The focus would not be on the A D U.
Except you could put them on a property line and right against, right against the property line. So if you go height of the building. You now affect your neighbor behind that line.
I think, yeah, it was something like, there's something like. Well, there is a four foot setback for A D U's.
Garage and the garage and you're doing a partial, then it's right on the property line. And so you go above fifteen feet. That that would affect the people behind.
The the addition, an addition, an attack, doing an addition for an A D U above a garage. The addition would require four foot setback.
If it's a garage, then they're only doing a partial, so they're not bringing down. We had this.
We have one right on.
We had, we had it right on the line. And we argued and argued because we thought it was a fire safety issue. And we wanted another exit, so the developer said they would go through the shower, but it was right on the property line, and it is allowed. You change the code for the height of an A D U, you're going to have serious issues. So I'm I'm an absolute no.
Is that?
I'm pretty much with Commissioner Law.
All right, moving on.
Your surprise sense. Additional dwelling units are mandated by the state.
But not the height.
And. I'm. Comfortable with the fifteen feet because it doesn't change the whole character of the adjacent property. Um, but yes, they could push their house bigger if it was not an additional dwelling. But then it's not additional dwelling unit and. It'd be an attached additional dwelling, and that's got different rules, I believe.
Yes, so the the two, those two bullets are not, they're not going to play off one, so.
Bring that one back with an example. That we can see how that would apply and how how it's advantageous to. Character of the city, not just something we don't have to review.
Will do.
Okay, next item.
So it's allow walls over three and a half feet in front yard, side yard. With city planner approval if criteria are met and we incorporate common conditions into the zoning code.
So what happens with them right now? Somebody wants a four foot wall in their front yard. Plan and commission. I don't remember seeing.
It's only administrator.
It's a zoning administrator.
So you would be eliminating it, so it would be the. Counter review rather than zoning administration. If you can show us how it, how that works. I don't know what the advantage is. I don't know how many of those you get. But if if they want to be.
We actually do get a number of those.
Three feet, six feet? It could be up to six feet and it would be a counter approval?
No, I think six feet, it goes to zoning administrator, and just in the last month, we've had three.
We get a number of these applications for over height walls.
Because I know in my neighborhood, people have built. It's something that hasn't been enforced. People come in with fences, walls. Five feet from the curb. And it's not enforced, so I think.
Eventually, eventually, yeah, so. Enforcement is based on complaints.
Exactly. I understand that.
Yeah, and so, you know, we unfortunately can't look at every single property. You know, as they're doing things. You know, as they're doing things, but people do tend to complain about over height fences. Um, you want, one of the, one of the things, um, that we, uh. You know, one of the, the benefits to something like this, we, we had an application for a, it was basically a pool barrier. Uh, it was glass in the front yard setback and based on the layout of the lot, yeah.
We had just a month or so ago.
Yeah, it can, it, the pool couldn't really be in the backyard, so something like that. Doesn't really damage the street scene too much and, and staff, you know, staff could, would feel comfortable. Uh, addressing those types of requests, however, if it was something. Let's say more impactful, then that, that's where we could get it to kicking it up to another level, so.
It, it, it'd have to be specific limitations then to that approval process, I think.
Absolutely, so, yeah, that, and that's, so when we go to the city council, we discuss this, well, we can say, you know, some of these items have general support. If we provide, you know, much clearer. Uh, details as far as what, uh, what, what, what type of project this would apply to. Is everybody comfortable moving on?
So currently, the city planner approval of a zoning permit is required to allow the development of accessory structures, for example, fences, arbers. Patio covers, et cetera, on the site that is subject to architectural review. Such properties in architecture overlay district or adjacent, or adjacent to a historic structure. There are circumstances where structures are clearly compatible with a property and existing development. The proposed streamlining items below would exempt accessory structures from special zoning permits that would, that meet that criteria.
So, so, and then there's the two bullets below that, that pertain to that.
So accessory, so the, the first bullet is accessory structures on a nonhistoric structure sites when the. Uh, structures have a design and materials in character with the primary building's architecture style. The structure, scale, size, location is screened from the public right of way. And the structure consistent with the city's design guidelines, general plan policies and regulations. Currently, a zoning administrator or a city planner approval is required depending on the circumstances. Um, the second bullet is talking about detached accessory structures on historic resource sites. When the structure have a traditional design and material in character with the historic structures, um, architectural style. The architecture scale, size, location is screened from the public right of way and the structure is consistent with the city's design guidelines, general plan. Policies and regulations.
So to, to add a little of this, so right now, we, we have some documentation that we prepare, what's called a staff waiver. To approve certain items like this. And there are times when things come in. That are so clearly non-factors, like a, um. Barbecue in the backyard of a historic site. And we have to make people fill out a form, spend staff time on that. Scan it, attach it to track it, get a signature. And write stuff for that, a barbecue.
So the second detached accessories, what are you? Supposed to change.
Making it where it's just allowed. If you meet those criteria, you would not need to do all that paperwork, it would just be allowed.
It's a, but right, a.
It's, it's either a staff waiver with the current, current model. Or just allowing it by right. So the idea here is very obvious situations where there's no issue. Because we, it's already a staff level review, but it's just, uh, as staff, we found times people. Want to do things and it just seems, uh. Questionable whether there's a need, there should be a need to write things. Spend all that staff time on it.
The sentence here where it says there are circumstances for structures are clearly compatible with the property and existing development. I would have no issue with that.
Uh, question, so Christopher, you know, when you say. Uh, am I interpreting this correctly when you talk about. Assess, accessory structures, that's what this applies to, so like a patio cover?
Yeah, sorry, interrupt you.
Because the, I guess the question I have is when it's permitted, so what you're saying is, hey, we won't need a permit. However, one of the things that comes along with a permit is an inspection. And I'm wondering if that would be. Something that we would be an unintentional consequence of. No longer requiring patio covers as an example. To be inspected and some people are now just building. Without proper engineering.
Are you referring to a built permit? Because a.
Right now, if you do a patio cover, my understanding is you do need a, you do need a permit.
Yes.
I built one, I needed a permit.
Anything you need a building permit for, you still need a building permit for, we're talking about a, a streamlined zoning process here. So not, right now, you need a special approval from the planning division. And a building permit.
Oh.
Now, even if we were to get rid of that special zoning permit. Planning still has the ability to do an inspection if we deem it appropriate. Even if some, you know, this would not take away our ability to make sure that they're doing what they say.
So there's still, what you're suggesting on this one is a reduction of the zoning permit, but we would retain the building permit requirement.
Correct. If there, if there is one, there are.
Yeah.
Structures that don't require.
Don't require it, sure.
But there's a lot of structures around town that don't require, uh, permits, people simply need to follow the code. They don't, then there's, then there's a process for it, uh, for correcting those.
Okay, I'm, I'm actually opposed to this one, Chris. The design review subcommittee is required to, there is also the historic. Body that reviews projects for historic structures. And we're taking it from a group of supposedly. Competent people. And giving it to possibly one person who doesn't have a lot of experience, is making an assumption, we don't know who in the.
We're talking.
Planning department is reviewing this. And anything that's gonna be, uh. But this is only for items and there also could be a Mills Act on it. Which, uh, has to be reviewed, anything that's in addition to Mills Act House that. Has to be determined whether it qualifies as correctly historic. So I'm not personally comfortable with this one.
You're talking about the bottom bullet?
Yeah, bottom bullet.
Okay. Not the one above it.
No.
Yeah.
So, am I understanding correctly that Commissioner Crandall, you do think that. City staff should write up a staff waiver to allow, say, like a barbecue in the backyard of a historic site?
I'm not on that. But I, I'm seeing other things that would be incorrect, you know.
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think it has to be defined so clearly and whatnot to protect those historic resources we've got.
That, um. I agree of a barbecue, something in the backyard, uh, whatever, uh. But there are other things I can see that wouldn't be appropriate.
Well, the way this, as, as I read this, you're saying, hey, the city, currently, this is city planner approval stuff. So it's not designer review subcommittee stuff. You're not taking away designer review subcommittee reviews.
Correct. Uh, I'll, almost, there, there's, on the first bullet. Um, accessory structures on his, on nonhistoric structure sites. The, the last line there is currently zoning administrator or city planner approvals. Wired for some of these projects, depending on circumstances. These staff would include. The standards, these would be reviewed. Or the standards that somebody would need to comply with to avoid zoning permit review. And part of that includes all the, you know, compliance with city design guidelines, general plan policies, all of that, if, if. Even with that type of description, you're still uncomfortable with it, we can take note of that.
Yeah, just, just make that comment on this one, who's on?
Okay, bottom, um. Is the rest of the commission. Uh, of the same. On the, on the, on the, uh, second.
Second, yeah, the bottom one.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So now we're moving on to a new section, it's for landscape slash hardscape. So currently, the city planner of a zoning permit is required to allow quote unquote minor landscape, hardscape changes. The scope of minor changes isn't defined so clearly, positive yet largely area. Um, larger area changes may not, may not be exempt from a special finding review. The proposed streamlining item would specify the types of landscape and hardscape changes that would be exempt. Uh, zoning permits, so first bullet in that one is landscape changes on properties. Uh, subject to architectural review when changes, uh, improve water efficiency, improve drainage, landscaping, coverage. And accent entrances when there's a, a particular opportunities and changes that are consistent with the city's design guidelines. General plan policies and regulations. Note that landscape changes may be subject to plan review depending on state law. But this, uh, procedural change would save applicants time and expense. Should I read the second one or?
Sure, the, these are all somewhat related, um, I think maybe we.
I just got a question on this, uh, so these are people coming in for just landscape changes or is this associated with the change to the whole project?
Yes, it's just land, it's just landscape, right now, you could get a staff waiver. For minor landscape and hardscape changes, that's it, that's it, that's all the text in there.
So what projects would those be that require architectural review for just landscape changes?
None, all right, minor landscape and hardscape changes. Would requ, are eligible for a staff waiver, but this does. Is refine that language to, to narrow down what, what is a minor? What is a minor landscape and hardscape change?
So this, we're talking a commercial site here?
It's any, any site. Any nonhistoric site.
I don't have to get a permit for zoning to change my landscaping in my front yard?
Well, uh, you're not near a historic building or in an architectural relay, so when I say any. Sorry, when I say any site, I'm talking, uh, residential, commercial, mixed use, uh, industrial. All the nonresidential automatically, if it's residential, if it's in an architectural relay or near a historic building.
Okay, so, uh, I think the definition of which projects are, uh. Subject to architecture review would certainly help.
Okay.
Understand that. Comments on that, uh. Move on to the next.
Hardscape changes on nonhistoric sites that have proposed. Materials and a design in character with a primary building's character style, the hardscape plans preserve historic tile. And surfaces, um, if existing, the changes reduce, um, in previous services when. There are particular opportunities and the changes are consistent with the city's design guidelines, general plan policies and regulations. Should I read the last one as well?
So this one is the same situation, same type of properties. Residential and architectural relay or in proximity to historic buildings. Commercial, mixed use, industrial. So nonresidential uses, if you want to do what is called minor hardscape, it requires a. A staff waiver, what we're trying to do here is narrow down certain types of minor landscaping. That doesn't warrant requiring staff to write up. As waiver, have people sign forms and do all that work.
Yeah, let's see how that one shakes out, anybody have any comment on that one? Okay, just move on to the next.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the last bullet, just hardscape changes on historic sites that have traditional. Materials and design in character with the primary building's architectural style. The hardscape plans preserve the historic tiles and surfaces if existing, the changes reduce in previous services when there's a practical opportunity, the proposal preserve. The proposal preserves the historic orientation, um, of entrance, entrance pathways. And the changes are consistent with the city's guidelines, uh, general plan policies and regulations. So I think all three would be very similar.
The last one, probably the most impactful because we're dealing with.
Yes, it is, because, uh, on historic sites, we like to try to keep historic landscape. And you're given certain latitude to do that. And, uh, certainly encouraged to do that, um. As far as what materials and whatnot and. When it comes to, you know, you've got to balance, um. Water conservation and all with the historic properties which are so few, so probably not impactful as far as that's concerned.
This, this one was trickier to write, uh, you know, you know, here's a, here's an example, if I. If I want to replace a shrub with a different shrub. Should that require a zoning permit?
It does seem excessive, but it, it, you know, historic, it's, it's because, um. Some people are given credit, I believe, on the Mills Act even if they, uh, want to return their property to. Known historic landscape. Materials. So be real careful on this one, um, consider all the. Promifications.
I think, you know, as an alternative to this idea. Yeah, I mean, as an alternative to this last bullet, we could change the text for the staff waiver section. To just make it clear what minor means, if, if there is concern about.
Uh, I'll give Larry a chance to not etc, how do you feel about that one? Okay.
Um, if we can have just the next slide, please. So we're gonna talk about parking, this one says, um, allow offsite and shared parking agreement with zoning administrator. Or city planner approval versus planning commission.
Do you have a lot of these?
We have a fair, we have a fair number.
Yeah.
Um, I would say probably in the neighborhood, uh, three a year. Um, a, a lot of them come as, as part of another application. Um, and we process concurrent applications to the highest review authority, so. Some of these would still naturally go to the planning commission if that was the highest review authority. However, there are some instances where somebody just, um, a new, a new business, a new land use moves in. And they require more parking and so they want to enter into a shared parking agreement. Um, and the, the, the idea here is that the code is relatively specific about when. A, a parking study would indicate that a shared parking agreement can be approved. So if, if, if the information like data. Uh, vehicle counts can be gathered and, uh, submitted. That indicate that two users can share. That indicate that two uses can share parking without, um, you know, tremendous overlap or impacts. We're saying that could be a, a staff or a zoning administrator review rather than planning commission. But again, it would have to be kind of either on its own or with a zoning administrator application.
I, I'm gonna say, I don't think the ten plus years I've been here that we've ever had. An item come and only be asking for offsite parking agree.
Usually it's with intensification of the use.
When the property is being intensified or something and it's concurrent with the application. It's never been a standalone request, so.
So.
Never seen a residential.
Yeah, um, you know, it could be mixed use. Um, I, I want to say that ten ten Santiago building. It, it, yeah, that was a, there was a shared parking agreement that was proposed. That was.
That was part of the project.
They were intensifying, weren't they?
Yeah, well, intensification is either gonna come through uh by right uses, like a restaurant that's by right replacing an office. Or a um, a restaurant with alcohol that would require a conditional use permit. Either one could, um, but would intensify, but not all intensifications require a conditional use permit on its own. Only if the parking would, uh, if, if, if the parking requirements can't be met onsite. So if there's some, let's call it general support for this.
I've, I've never seen examples of that request.
I think it's a, it's for businesses. I think it's valuable if they, if they don't have onsite parking and they are required so many parking spaces. Things like there was something on, is it an ice cream shop?
You mean if a use change?
Yes.
Well, then they'd be asking for a conditional use permit. It would be concurrent with that.
Exactly. Not always. Um, not, not every use change requires a conditional use permit. In fact.
Like a restaurants requiring, uh, they want to increase the number of seats. Okay. Let's say they're able to reduce the kitchen a little bit, gain more seats. They don't have the parking, it would be concurrent with or not.
The changes to the layout of the restaurant may not require any permits. The only thing that they require is more parking.
Uh, just provide an example to show how that would help things.
Yeah, and, and, and this is actually a good example of a streamlining opportunity. We don't see very many applications. Because this, um, people don't want to go through this process to move a business. If all they need is more is, is to demonstrate shared parking. So we don't see a lot of these applications because it's very burdensome. And it potentially could lead to businesses moving elsewhere, finding locations in other cities. Um, moving into somewhere like that's less desirable to them. Uh, we're just not gonna see these applications because nobody wants to go through it.
I think I would only have a problem if it's gonna, but the residential zone, you're gonna put the shared parking.
Great comment.
If I know.
That would be my concern.
Well, shared parking is typically just taking existing spaces. You could have a church that's next to a residential area and separate. Well, they've gotta have a contract and I don't think the residential area can. Write a contract that will provide a driveway, shared parking. I don't see that.
Shared parking could be, they could, they could be here, but they're gonna satisfy their parking situation here.
If they have an agreement, then employees could park here and walk back here or vice versa. That's.
So that would be an offsite park, that would be an offsite parking agreement. Um, Chris, was, was this? No, excuse me, this does contemplate offsite parking. So I, I agree, that's a really good comment. Um, we can include that because there are certain times where people, you know, would be walking. Uh, between properties and we can, we can include that comment for the, for the city council.
Alright, next we have reduce review to establish certain uses. So the first bullet says remove conditional use permit requirement. For development in five or more units.
Yeah, I. I may be mistaken, but I, I recall that the state of, state wants us to do this. Uh, for housing elements.
It's not, it's not, is it required when you say the state wants? Is it a demand or a suggestion?
It is, Paulus, it's a, it's one of the programs um of our housing element. And in order for us to get it approved by HCD. This, this type of um reduction in um discretionary review of housing. Um, uh, applications is going to be necessary or was necessary, I should say. And I, and I believe you're right, Chris. This is something that we've had on the list for a while. I think it was just a, a holdover.
So in other words, we wouldn't have anything to say about this.
So we have, it's, it's relatively general language in the housing element. We still need to implement this change. Um, and so there's potentially some opportunity to identify. Some, some limitations, but honestly, I, at this point. If this is something, staff is either going to have to do this and it will come back to the planning commission or. We have, we have the option uh to somewhat limit it. So either way. I, I believe that this will be coming back on its, on its own regardless of, of.
Is I would like you to see my sad face when it comes back to planning.
Yes, I would like to add that um this specific bullet, we're actually going to. Um, this is gonna be part of our housing element rezoning program. So we're going to definitely. If this is, this will be research and extent, put together a design, as objective design guidelines. There'll be specific policies that meet our housing element um for our arena to accommodate all those. Um, numbers that we are required to meet. So if we don't necessarily have to focus on this right now, but it will come back. But it'll be more research and detailed.
Okay, makes sense.
If that helps.
Okay.
Um, our next bullet is allow restaurants to sell alcohol for onsite consumption. Um, type forty-one, forty-seven and have a non-amplified entertainment. Um, the noise ordinance already addresses noise and doesn't require a conditional use permit for non-amplified sound.
So this is a, this is a potential way to reduce the amount of time. Uh, it takes for restaurants to go through the process uh for approval. Most restaurants don't require conditional use permit on their own and so they would come in if they want to sell alcohol. Now, the type forty-one and forty-seven is the difference between beer and wine and hard alcohol. So there. It doesn't have to be both and staff is. Um, staff understands that, you know, there's, there's um a benefit for this type of review. Um, however, they're also regulated by the ABC. Um, and so it's not. It, it, this, this wouldn't just be carte blanche for anybody to. To be able to sell alcohol for onsite consumption.
Now, what about uh adjacency to schools? I mean, there's gonna be a lot of perceptions. This wouldn't apply to.
Yes, there would be those types of.
So it's gonna be pretty complicated.
But also, ABC also regulates the alcohol beverage control board, also regulates. Distances from schools and other sensitive receptors.
So with this, a restaurant have by right. Serve alcohol once they got their ABC?
Uh, yeah, that's, that's what, that's what we're saying.
We can't mess with the ABC license. I still think there, it's an importance to have a review. The whole site and the piece of property and how they're gonna, you know, integrate this in their business, in their scheme.
Yeah, just, just to note that, but we were considering putting this bullet here as indoor uses. Rec- recognizing that there are different circumstances when you want to have outdoor sales because. There's more potential for mon- monitoring breakdowns, say, uh, minor approaching an outdoor patio or something like that. This is just to be indoors.
That's gonna need, uh, uh, I think a lot of uh deep thought because I'm thinking we're getting a lot of. Uses in our, uh, commercial areas and whatnot or parks. Where you might have a Montessori school, you might have a. Alcohol treatment thing. So if a sandwich shop or something comes in next door to those two, if I write have. The right to serve alcohol and. Don't have an answer for that, but something to consider.
Yeah, it's kind of like serving alcohol at a C store at the gas station or selling it to me. It's the same thing. You want to put a CUP on a C store. If they want to sell alcohol like in a. Yeah, or even not consumption, even if they just want to sell alcohol at the C store at the gas station.
Isn't it only allow restaurants though?
That's making analogy, yeah, but um, no, you're all.
Saying what's a restaurant?
You're all making very good points.
Water town where.
Yeah. There, there would still be standards needed to meet in order to, for this, for this. Um, exemption from a permitting to apply. So we would, we would, we would still have standards.
Yeah.
That a business would need to meet.
I'm just saying.
For the most part.
It's a lot of.
And this, this would actually be a relatively big impact because as, as a noted chair, uh, we are getting. Uh, restaurants are replacing retail. Quite frequently. It's going in that direction and every, every restaurant wants to serve alcohol.
That's where they make their money.
So, um, are we okay with at least exploring this? Or is this?
I think it's concerning enough. Clear examples of the pros and cons of it. So, uh, it kind of have a head stuff, but it could involve.
Okay.
Okay, um, so the next bullet is allow residential on the same level as nonresidential. Uses slash floors of mixed use buildings by right versus with a conditional use permit.
So, at this about is if you want to develop a mixed use building. The whole idea is that you're gonna have a mix of uses. And right now, you need a CUP to have a residential unit on the same level as a nonresidential use. The idea would be you would no longer need that CP.
Would we have legislation or code that says what could or could not be next to the residential?
We could spell that out. Sure.
Absolutely.
Commercial, this next door to somebody who has kids.
You know, and, uh, just one note of clarification. So, uh, a lot of times this can come up. Uh, in a, in a. In, in a, uh, one of our pedestrian oriented um areas where. We want commercial to be along the pedestrian. Um, sidewalk passageways and keep residential away from it. So one of the standards that we would have for this type of by right allowance would be that we could not have residential. On the pedestrian facing side on the first floor of nonresidential in these types of. Like the downtown here.
The slope sites, the down slope sites, alleys and whatnot that uh. That floor goes out, cannot be residential behind it on the same floor. As commercial, so there are situations where this occurs just. Because of the site conditions, so.
But for the most part too, people. Can choose to live somewhere else if they don't want to be next to the use.
And, you know.
It could be rental, it could be nightly. I mean, you don't know what the restrictions are for who are these residential sites. Are they owned sites, the residential owned?
You don't know.
You could have, yeah, we don't know. Cause then you could have a volatile commercial business move in. Next to them, if it's the owner of the commercial business who wants to live behind their business, like in the old days. That's totally different than somebody who buys the vacuum in it. With threat of a commercial unit can go to anybody else.
I think we can always think of some scenario where something doesn't work right. The big picture, the idea is. Where can we streamline, you know, and not try and. Create a scenario where it's a problem, but the majority of the scenario is gonna be a problem.
Yeah, and, and I just again want to reiterate, staff will provide the standards that allow for this type of, of exception. The, the by right, I will say.
We're not making an exception anymore, so I think if you do it where the planning. Will land, city planner decides, no, these things are too. Complicated between the two uses. We've got to kick it up a level.
Uh, that, that's actually a good point, but we do, we do have standards for by right uses. Um, and, and that's, a lot of the code is dedicated to, to that. Um, to just regulate things that do not require any zoning permits or any, even any, you know, any staff level review. So we, we're comfortable with those, including those kinds of standards to clarify when. This, this would be exempt from some type of review. However, uh, you know, we could also. Take the commission's recommendation to make it not by right, but.
An MCU and MCUPs.
Either a city planner approval or an MCP, I, yes, whatever, whatever the commission's feelings on this are.
I mean, you, you guys are the specialists in the code writing, so.
So I would say that we want to take a crack at trying to make this by right. Because that would be the most streamlined way of, of, of doing this. Anything beyond that is going to inherently.
Be less, but what do you think is the most, most um. Beneficial to the city, not just necessarily the fastest solution.
Yeah, so, well, as I started, um, when this i- item came up, I said staff is not supportive of anything we don't think. Can be implemented well. We believe that we can make this by right. If this, if the city council and the planning commission still see issues with these two. Like residential and nonresidential uses being on the same level of a mixed use building. That's okay. But staff feels comfortable that if the direction is, yeah, we don't really have an issue with those two. Those two uses being at the same, you know, on the same level, then we're, we're comfortable moving forward, writing standards that would. Uh, allow for that to occur under specified scenarios. And if we bring it back to the planning commission and it doesn't work for you, then we can change it at that time.
I, I think we're probably. Okay, I'm, I'm okay with the, uh, I write. But I can't because, only because you can't come up with a circumstance where I think it's wrong, but there should be a trigger in there that if. Something obviously conflicts. It can be reviewed more carefully.
Absolutely, yeah. So we'll say conceptually this. Is, yeah. Commission's comfortable moving forward. Okay, anything else on that one? Alright, Sarah?
Yep, uh, last bullet for this uh part. So reduce review of several conditionally permitted. Uses from a conditional use permit to a minor conditional use permit. For example, allow service stations to be converted into a permitted use with a minor conditional use permit versus a conditional use permit.
So who approves the, uh, the minor one? Is that staff?
Zoning administrator.
Yeah, and that's not, not, not staff. That would be a public hearing. The city has a lot of uses. There's essentially any use that we require a conditional use permit for. Could be knocked down to a minor condition use permit. Moving forward on this item would look like.
Be the best example.
Well, this is a service station that's getting converted into a permitted use. Uh, okay, that's, this is to incentivize that. Right, yeah, right, yeah. Okay, um, and so we could look for those types of opportunities, but. really anytime we knock something down from a conditional use permit to a minor conditional use permit, we're making the process substantially easier for them.
Yeah, I can see how that could be beneficial.
Yeah. And so if, if and when this would move forward, most likely we, this would be a study session item where we would bring a list of uses that currently require a conditional use permit and talk about the potential to make them minor conditional use permits. At this time, it, it's, that's going to take a bit of work to, yeah. To describe. So are we, is the commission okay with moving that one forward?
I am.
Okay. So the last item, and I will discuss this one, is an application shot clock. Uh, this was proposed by council and the, uh, I'm going to have Mal assist me on this one, but essentially what the idea here is to establish a shot clock provision in our municipal code to automatically determine projects as approved if staff is unable to process an application in a target timeframe. Um, and the target timeframe, I, I just put, for example, six months. It could be three months. It could be any, any period of time. The issue wi- with this is that we cannot have a shot clock like this that applies to discretionary applications because we are required to comply with the California Environmental Quality Act. And there's no, there, there's no ability to bypass that process to obtain a discretionary level permit. So this would only apply to administrative permits. Once we start thinking about administrative permits, it, there's not that, there's, there's really no, there's really no time where staff is very slow at processing this type of application. So if we, something like this could be added, it wouldn't really make that big of an impact because our typical timeframe is about two weeks um, for administrative permits. Some can take a, a, a bit longer, but that's just due to the process required to ensure that all the, the codes are met. I'll let Mel add anything that he would like to discuss as far as legal implications.
As far as who's going to point the finger to?
Yeah, no, I think that's, I think that's generally accurate. So state law currently or already has a shot clock, if you will, that attaches to discretionary actions. It's called the Permit Streamlining Act. And staff is required to process applications pursuant to specific timeframes that are embedded in the PSA. So staff has to determine that an application is complete by deadlines and then has to take action on applications by certain deadlines. Now, as Adam said, those deadlines key off of CEQA. Um, because you can't bypass CEQA. Um, but we do have those, those shot clocks, if you will, in state wall, uh, state law that apply to discretionary actions. This would apply exclusively to ministerial actions. You could embed in your code, um, the PSA deadlines to make them both state law and local law, but it wouldn't change what state law says about those deadlines. Again, we already have deadlines that come from state law when it comes to discretionary actions.
And how does this expose the city to potential lawsuits? Uh, I mean, does this really open it up or?
Well, the issue
The, yeah, deadline gets approving projects that are incomplete, not according to the applicant, but according to the city.
Yes, essentially.
Something that isn't correct.
Right. That it, it, it could lead to things being approved that are, uh, don't meet, that don't meet the municipal code. That's, that's one. You know, the, ultimately the completeness of the application is the completeness of the application matters to the processing and determination made on that application. What we're talking about is once, once it's approved, um, because of the shot clock, whatever they propose is what they would essentially what they would be able to, um, to, 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 to build. So this really doesn't put the city in the best position to maintain compliance with our own municipal code. However, you know, there's an alternative here and that is that, um, you know, staff is, is aware of the desire for the speed of, uh, of review and the clearly the streamlining of applications. This is a process that the city council controls. They, they, staff works for them. So if they say they want things approved by a certain time, then the only real hurdles to that is what is the process necessary to approve such a request? And what are the resources necessary to carry that out? So the shot clock, you know, I, I I understand the, the desire of it and I'm, I'm not, um, I'm not against the, the intent. Um, but we, this is a closed system. We, the city maintains the ability to carry out the council's desires in terms of timelines. The Permit Streamlining Act is a state law that applies to other governments, i.e. smaller municipal governments. This is a, this is interesting because it would, it would be from us for, for city staff.
Self composed.
Yeah, self imposed. I can see both sides of this. I think part of it is the definition of done. Which means when you have applicants that don't understand what they're doing and they submit incomplete applications, but from their perspective, they're done, but they're not. That, that, that interaction right there accounts for, I think, a lot of friction in the system between citizens and the, and the, and the city. Because right now it's very difficult to understand what, what's required. And what am I applying for? Oh, I, geez, I applied for the wrong thing. Oh, no, I have to start over. No way. I have a shot clock. Uh, is that reset? So to me, this does make it the definition of done very important. The track it system version nine, I think it's going to go a long way because if the system accepts it and then they get that notification of your application has been submitted, complete. We're now into the processing stage. Maybe that's the definition of done. So I, for me, I think this is one of those situations where good intentions could land us in situations where people are pointing fingers unnecessarily. And what we need to do is evolve. So if we evolve with track it version nine, that is a new, is game changing, I think, because it will help people who are newbies that applying or even experienced people applying for something new to understand their end of the bargain. You have to submit all of these things before your application initial submittal is considered complete. So my recommendation would be, we would put this one kind of in abeyance until we evolve with track it version nine. We evolve with these other streamlined things and we live with it for a while and we realize in fact, the promise of track it version nine has been realized and we can call the initial submission of an application, complete or done. Then this makes sense because now it's not arbitrary and now it's not subject to confusion because right now, when I am out and talking to people, they're very confused about, well, I had to do this, but the city told me I needed to do this and that's their fault. No. That's a, that's an operator area. You didn't understand what was required, but you have sympathy for them because what's required is not clear. Very difficult to figure it out. So I, my recommendation would be, we don't trash this, but we don't adopt it yet. We put it in advance. We, we, we evolve with the track at nine. We also evolve with our streamlining or our condensing of the applications. Cause right now, there's so many different ways to apply for stuff that can be incorrect. Their perception is I'm off to the races, but no, you've applied for the wrong thing. You haven't even started. Once we get all those things in place and perhaps even some additional things on the website that allows them to navigate it. You're trying to do this. It's, you answer these questions. Boom. This is the permit you need. Once we get all that done, I think then this becomes something we should bring back. So rather, because I, when my concern is the appeal of this might be so good, the council might say, let's put that in upfront before we're ready. Uh, and so that would be my suggestion on that. In fact, that leads me into my overall comment about all of this, which is I would like to see my colleagues agree with me on this, which is, I think we should ask the staff to include our support for the very beginning of your presentation, which was those big four projects, the specific plans. Uh, because those specific plans will give us the design guidelines that are kind of a prerequisite for doing this stuff. Without the design guidelines, we can't do this stuff. So I wouldn't want the appeal of let's fast, let's put the fast track work program ahead of and stall our specific plans because then we won't have the design guidelines and we'll be fumbling the ball. So the specific plans, because they give us compliance with state law, they give us design guidelines. That priority needs to be ahead of all this. The same with the housing element and rezoning program required by state law. We need that ahead of this. The LCP, those, I think those have design guidelines as well that the coastal commission needs to sign off on and maybe once that's submitted, that there, that's going to take a year for the coastal commission. Okay. That would be a good, another thing we need to get done. And then the track it version nine that, to me, those, we need to make, we need to make sure we're educating the council on what the benefit and of these are in their aggregate and the, and the fact that they are prerequisites to doing this. As much as they may want these things now, that would be a mistake. And because we would be basically turning over acts to the staff to interpret design guidelines to make decisions that don't exist. So I would, I mean, that's the way I'm structuring it. These are prerequisites to getting, before we can do the fast tracking. So if we all agree with that, I would like to see that reflected in the minutes or reflected in your returning to council that, oh, and by the way, you know, the planning commission wanted us to reiterate that these things really are prerequisites and also educate them on the real benefits of the track it system. Cause I think that's game changer. Cause that will tell an applicant, your initial submission is good. Versus today, I know there's a lot of confusion and when it's incomplete and then people are pointing fingers and we can avoid all that.
Okay. Very good. Um, thank you. Uh, on this shot clock, um, I think you'd need to find some other city that has come up with a adequate shot clock proposal. I haven't seen one yet in all the projects I've processed and whatnot. Where it really works, because we've got little projects, we've got medium sized projects, we've got huge projects that can overwhelm a city, uh, staff and they can't even do the work. It's all got to be farmed out. On the big expensive projects that are taking a lot of land, I totally understand. Any builder needs a performer. You know, built in, how long is it going to take me to get it processed? And if they do things right, it can be pretty quick. But, um, for small projects, they ought to be, but the solution is typically staffing. And so I don't know how we can come up with a, you know, we can say, yeah, we'll do a slot shot clock if there's adequate staffing for yeah, the planning department. Um, but in some cases, maybe a deal is on big projects. If the applicant so chooses to have it processed quickly, they pay a premium and are willing to bring in or their project be reviewed by not necessarily just in planning, this planning, building, engineering, um, inspection, the whole bit, a premium to bring in, uh, outside individuals or companies to perform those services.
Expedited.
So everything's expedited.
Like capacity on demand.
Exactly. Um, so we wouldn't have to staff up. If the other backside to this, if we give a, um, a drop dead date and all of a sudden we've got a economic downturn. Where we can't keep staff on board and whatnot. What do you do? All of a sudden you can't fund the staff to do it within that time for, it just, they're not there. And, um, so there are a lot of pitfalls. So I think we need to find an example where it's been done properly. But it would be great to have, it would, I think, increase applications. Um, it'd be good for development, good for developers. And maybe you can ask them, you know, what they've seen in the past, but you know, whatever it will be to their advantage. So it's certainly something to consider, but I don't have a solution how to or what the, uh, planning commission can do to say, just throw more people at it more than
Which we don't have. That's the problem.
Yeah. So that's the, the danger, but, um, I understand the desire to have something like that. And if we can make it work great, I just have to see how.
I, my idea is I, as long as it's non-discretionary, right? Just, it just takes administrative, you know, approval. My two problems here are we probably know our target timeframes internally, how fast we should have certain administrative, you know, approvals done. So when we say targeted timeframes, we should have those timeframes already. I have a problem with automatic because I don't think just because it misses some timeframe, whether it's simple or complex, that they should automatically be given it because it may be greatly disadvantaged to the city, city in a number of ways. But I do think there should be some, if, if we have a list of how long this should take, two weeks, four weeks, six months. If it's approaching that, there should be some kind of trigger or little tickler. You know, why is it taking that long? So that we, maybe we can remedy. I don't know where it would go. But somehow we could see and then evaluate why it's happening. I just think if we were to adopt a a shot clock, which I'm not against, but you know, the shot clock in the NBA is you got to shoot the basket. Here, we need to know what the basket is, like where these administrative approvals usually take. And if there's a problem, the trigger would come up, but not to give it, you know, automatic.
Yeah. I, I'd like to piggyback on that and maybe initial step might be setting up service level. As you, as you go through this, you know, this process of consolidating and so forth, maybe you would come up with a service level that says, we expect this to be done in X amount of time and you may be padded a little bit for uncertainties. And if you don't, as you're coming up within a week of that and it's not done, it automatically, you know, escalation goes to the director. Says this one's falling behind, or maybe it's 30 days before or some, so it goes to the director and goes immediate to them. And then maybe a week before it goes to the city manager, um, rather than automatic approval. We maybe put the training wheels on before we go full on with auto approving stuff. Yeah.
About six or eight years ago, could be 10 years ago, um, an outside consultant did a study on the efficiency of, uh, the department. So there's a template out there that was used to see the efficiency and come up with projected timeframe. So if you can, I don't know.
Nobody's around that was involved in that, that I know of.
Yeah. Um, over time, there, there have been a number of such studies. The thing that I would, um, like to say, oh, is that we are aware of what those timeframes are. We have performance measures that we are required to compile every quarter and they go into the budget every year. And that is to inform the council in their budgetary allocations. If over time, performance is not up to par, there's generally only a few reasons for that. Either we, staff doesn't have the resources to make the deadlines that we've
The city has desired for our processing of applications or there there is a fundamental problem with. Our staffing, in which case that would be eternal review and we want to correct those problems. But we we do have these these standards and they're identified in the application information. On the city's website, in planning and in building. Where we we tell people what the timeframe is for typical process, processing of applications. From the time that they are deemed complete, until they're deemed complete, it's it's that's. It's incumbent on the applicant to provide the necessary information. And in planning, that can be somewhat difficult. And the reason being is that planning or zoning laws are very nuanced. Every city is different. Building is the California building code in all cities in California. They can modify it to some extent, but. It's much more consistent. Nobody that goes into a city that is that's unfamiliar with its zoning is going to have that easy of a time. So our applications, and we only get one shot at this, of telling people what they're supposed to provide when they submit an application. Has to include everything possible. We do a lot of handholding when it comes to.
That's what I meant by my definition of done, like what is a complete submittal?
Yeah, so I, there's a lot to this and and our desire is to process things as. Fast as humanly possible. Zoning is 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 a unique scenario in that there are a lot of considerations and a lot of variables to what. Can impact the timing of of an application. So I'll say that we we are aware of what the the processing timeframes. That we should be within our, and if we have applications that are taking longer to process, then we go and address those. Those particular issues.
Okay, any other comments?
Yeah, I, I do. Sorry. I think staff did a great job of compiling the list, a lot of opportunities for improvement. So I commend you on that. To the regular applicant, you, all of these ones, if I'm not mistaken, every single one with the exception of track at nine. Was specific to planning department. The applicant doesn't know that. All he wants is a permit, but he's got to, you know, get through public works or engineering and building and safety. And OCFA maybe. So I would love to see, you know. Some outreach to the other departments, look for opportunities. One in particular with engineering, I think grading permits. My understanding is that grading permits trigger if you have to move fifty yards or more, which, you know, a pool could do that. And and then if you do that, public works is slow on reviewing grading permits. Like it's gonna, it's gonna, you're gonna have a four month delay because you've got a grading permit.
And enough burger place was not delayed for that.
I don't know. So so I think that, I don't know if, you know, you can interface with the other people. But I think grading permits should be looked at. I don't know what other choke points there are or what other problems in other departments that cause delays. I think it would be great if. With the track at nine system, it would be awesome if people that are getting inspections could have. Could see where their inspector is or how far away he is from the job site. Because normally you say, okay, I get a morning permit. I've got a morning inspection. You got to be there at eight. Get isn't shut till, you know, noon. You just wasted a morning waiting around for 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 the inspector, but if you could see, hey, he's he's two stops away, he's one stop away. Like in Laguna and the girl, they they, every morning you can log on and you can say, okay, my inspection's from between eight to ten, ten to twelve. Noon to two, you know, but even like the other day, I had one that was ten to twelve. I was about to leave, I decided to get, is it one? So I'll give it to one oh five and then he showed up. Because I knew the second I left, he was going to show up, but I sure would have liked to have known that he was, you know. So if it's possible, that would be a big help to to users to 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 permit these. Another thing, which I know is outside of your control, but if you could get some attention on it from council would be awesome. The Orange County Survey Department, relative to like map processing and things, is notoriously super, super slow. If you want to do a simple parcel map, it takes a year and that's, that's, that's a huge disservice to people that need that service. So any kind of political pressure that could be used to push that along would be awesome. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a few comments, but I'll keep them brief. I'm a big fan of the submittal permit web based process. I think if you could streamline the permit process, along with my colleagues, I think a lot of the other things that we looked at here tonight. Would fall in line. So I would like to see that be the number one. Also with the building inspectors going out on job sites and other areas, they actually text message. They let them know that they're on their way or they'll be there in an hour. So that would give some idea of. Where they are in the queue. When you can follow your submittal from start to finish. You're not going to get the phone calls of what's going on, so that will streamline the process. It works in other cities and it's time it needs to, it needs to work here. Everything else that we talked about tonight is somewhat of a wish and a dream. This is something that you can do immediately. It looks like you're already moving forward with that. So I'm, again, I'm very supportive of that. That's what I call streamline. Codifying the design guidelines with objective standards, also very positive. And then consolidating the site plans and development mid process into that one bucket. I think that will be helpful. All of this is a little bit of a prequel, so everybody knows what they need ahead of time to submit their project. And it's not another phone call, oh, well, now you need, you know, a site plan or now you, now you need to submit your SubSAR. So get it all done at once, get it in and it will work itself out. I have a lot of concern about all of these other things that were listed, all all very reasonable, but yet vague. And that's when I say it's more of a hope and a dream. At this point, I want to see that tightened up and we talked about those areas. Very concerned about changing height standards, property lines, codes. That needs to be looked at closer. So those are my comments, but I'm very, very happy that there is going to be some streamlining.
Go down the line.
I've got an acute sense for the public not being raised from decision making process. Taking it out of the clause I legislated for, the clause I judicial, this isn't being made by somebody's paper, it's city.
And making things as transparent as possible. Okay, Mr. McCann. Okay, um, does staff have any questions of us at this point?
No, we do not. I appreciate all of the comments that were provided. I will say that the, this this item is going back to the city council as a special presentation. While the item will be. Finished at the end of this meeting, if there are any individual commissioners that have comments or thoughts. Staff would still like to hear about them after the fact. We can always add them into our comments when we, when we go to. City council, though it wouldn't necessarily be reflective of the commission as a whole, but yeah, there's a lot here. So if you wake up in the middle of the night with some great idea, do not give it to yourself.
Very good, okay. And thank you, Chris.
Good job, Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Appreciate it.
Thank you for giving us the opportunity.
We missed, we missed seeing you in person.
Sometime soon.
Okay. So that will do it for the permit streamlining part business. So now we have old business. Do we have any? Comments on old business? I see none. Reports of commissioners and staff. Adam, did you have anything you wanted to?
Yes, the council meeting of July fifth. Chris, that council meeting of the first July council meeting is canceled and. Can be customary for the planning commission to cancel its first or it's it's. A joining meeting to that council canceled, which would make the July sixth meeting. Yeah, the July sixth meeting, the one to cancel if the commission would like to do that. Right now, there's nothing on the to future agenda for that meeting. So the commission would like to. We can move forward with that and at the right time, just adjourn. Adjourn to the meeting afterwards. We do have another meeting before. Before that meeting. To finalize that idea.
Let people plan their short week for those that are working.
I'm going back to work so I could be here on the sixth.
We can take one off, but we can take that one off our calendar, right? Probably. Sounds like.
That's what he said.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So by the next meeting, I would count, I would go.
Me too.
I'm either way.
Okay. Okay, so no opposition to it. And then I wanted to bring up. One item, just to encourage the planning department staff to push for getting continuing education going for. Planning commissioners, there's a planning commissioner. Seminar in early November for commissioners. And it's, and it's in Dana Point, one of the local ones. Cool. So I would encourage. Staff, consider that and see if I've been to a number of them and they're very helpful. So. I think that does it for reports from commissioners and staff. So do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting to the next regular meeting of the planning commission to be held on Wednesday, June the twenty second. Twenty two hundred and two at six P M at San Clemente Committee Center Auditorium, one hundred Calais, Seville, San Clemente, California.
I'll second that.
So motion by Commissioner McCann, second by Commissioner Cosgrove. Is an I.
I.
I. And an I by Crandall passes.
Good job, everybody.
And it lasted a little longer than we expected, but it deserved the time. Good work always.